For the Pledge of Allegiance, the invocation given by Chaplain Commissioner Stacy White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic
And to the republic for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders this morning as we make important decisions about land, which is a precious resource. I pray that you will help us to find that appropriate balance between commerce and community. And as always, Lord, I pray for our armed forces and all of our first responders. I pray that you will keep each and every member of the armed forces and each and every first responder safe. Guide them and comfort them. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner White.
Yep.
Is Mr. Moreta on?
Chairman, we need to do a roll call.
I'm sorry, you're right, you're right. A roll call for quorum purpose.
Miller?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Merman? Commissioner Merman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Ms. Wise?
She probably won't be on this call.
Okay, you have a quorum, sir.
Okay. Mr. Moreta? Mr. Moreta?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is General Development Services for the record. I want to go ahead and read in the changes that we have to the agenda. The first one is found on page A1, rezoning PD 18-0996. This application is being continued by staff to the October 13th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A2, personal appearance 20-0390. This application is out of order and is being continued to September 8th. Board of Commissioners meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Item A3, personal appearance 20-0516. This application is out of order and is being continued to the September 8th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. And finally, item A4, vacating petition B19-0007. This petition is being continued to September 8th Board Meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. Commissioners, that concludes the changes.
Move the changes.
Move the changes.
I have a motion back Commissioner White, talking about Commissioner Merman to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Commissioner Merman.
Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Talking about Commissioner White to approve the consent agenda. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp? Commissioner Kemp? Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, those who had B items or items that just been approved. Anyone wishing to testify this morning, please stay in and raise your right hand and be administered the oath by the clerk.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Mr. Moreta?
Good morning, Commissioners. This brings us up to item E1 on the agenda. This is a personal appearance number 19-1397. It's located in the Greater Carrollwood-Northville Plan, specifically on 6117 Greby Lane. Commissioners, this is a plan development that was approved in 2014. It had a condition that included an eight-foot-high wall. The applicant is proposing to amend that condition to allow an 11-foot-high wall with a three-foot area on the bottom to allow for drainage within a 170-foot segment of the site. And also to remove a second access point, which is to provide access through the adjacent subdivision onto Avarelo Drive via Villa Road. There was two access points on the original site plan, and the trip generation really doesn't sustain the need for two access points. Our transportation staff reviewed this and is supportive of it, and we are recommending approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Applicant present?
We are.
Yes, sir. Good morning. You have 15 minutes.
Great. Good morning. I'm Roy Major, WRA Engineering, 4260 West Lineball Avenue. Quick overview of the project is, the project's an additional phase of an existing subdivision. The current PD plan allows for 15 lots, although only 12 are being proposed for development. The current zoning condition allows for an eight-foot wall when the PD plan showing two access points to a private road internal to the subdivision. The reason for our appearance, as Mr. Moreta said, that for a 170 linear foot section, which parallels Lake Magellan Road, we're asking that wall section be allowed to be raised from eight feet to 11 feet. And we're also asking that we're able to remove one of the two access points currently shown on the PD plan. The reason for the request is to raise the wall from eight to 11 feet to provide visual and audio screening from Lake Magellan Road. The extra height is needed as the change in grade or the downslope from the building pad to the edge of the wetland buffer is such that an eight-foot wall functions as a five-foot wall. Again, the pad of the building pad is about three feet higher than the edge of the property boundary. And thus would not really provide much screening from Lake Magellan Road. The wall is to be constructed at the edge of the wetland buffer with no encroachments. And the wall would have a three-foot open gap at the bottom, thus allowing water to flow freely from the lot to the wetland, which it currently does. Regarding the access points, the reason the two access points were originally requested was to provide options and flexibility during the design of the project. The reason for the removal of the access point is the final design does not feature a second access point and really making it unnecessary. And also, given the small trip generation of the 12 lots, it does not trip the requirement for a second entrance. In addition, to my understanding, several residents of the adjoining street got with the property owner and requested that the second access not be constructed, if at all possible. And again, the trip generation from the 12 lots does not trip the threshold for the second entrance. So with that stated, we agree with staff's analysis and would appreciate your favorable ruling. Joining me today is a property owner, J.R. Sierra, and both of us will be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. I didn't have anyone listed, Mr. McElroy, that was wanting to speak as a proponent or opponent on this. Am I correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Miller.
Okay, all right. So therefore, we're going to move. Applicant, you don't have anything to rebuttal. We waive your time.
May the prayer of Commissioner Merman.
I have a motion about Commissioner Merman. Second by, who's the second?
Second, Commissioner White.
Talking about Commissioner White. The discussion. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Moreta?
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item E2, personal appearance 20-0388, located in Riverview. Commissioners, this is an amendment to a plan development approved in 2019 originally. It involves removing pedestrian access in one area to relocate cross-access in two other areas and also to reconfigure a stormwater pond in an element, in a pocket one of the site. Ms. Michelle Heinrich of our staff is going to walk through the geographic area where those changes will occur. Staff is not supporting this particular case.
Good morning, Ms. Saul Heinrich, Development Services. As Mr. Moreta stated, the applicant does have four proposed changes to this PD. Three of those are shown graphically. The first one is removal of the pedestrian bridge, which is currently located here, and that is to connect pockets two and three. This is located in the SMU 6 future land use category, and a project of this size does require horizontal or vertical integration. This pedestrian bridge was proposed by the applicant during the original PD. And as you heard today, they are requesting for that to be removed. On this figure here in the middle, this shows the stormwater relocation located in the southeast portion. And then the last graphic shows the change in the northern cross-access that's moving further westward. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, I would note that in addition to what Michelle said, that the thrust of our lack of support is primarily organized around the pedestrian bridge. And that's an item that was rooted in the comp plan, and the other changes staff did not have an issue with.
Okay. Applicant present?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm sorry, I have not been sworn.
Please swear the applicant in.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, you have 15 minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a PRS 0388. My name is Elise Batzel with Stone's Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street, here on behalf of the applicant and property owner. I'm joined by our engineers as well as our site design team. This property is approximately 107 acres. It's located between I-75 and US Highway 301 in Riverview. The current zoning is a planned development, and the future land use designation is SMU 6. You've seen this a couple of times over the last couple of years. There are three requests, as staff has stated. To relocate a cross-access point to the north to align with the development pattern that's developing north of the property. To eliminate an interim resource recovery facility as a permitted use within all pockets. And to remove a condition requiring the pedestrian access from pocket two to pocket three. With respect to the cross-access alignment, as you can see, again, it's just to realign the roadways so that they interconnect and provide more connectivity to proposed development to the north. The interim use as a resource recovery facility is no longer needed. The site is beginning to develop according to the other uses, and so we're just asking for an elimination of that use. With respect to the pedestrian walkway, which is the issue that staff has the most concern about, I'll go back just a little bit. Originally, the purpose of the pedestrian access was to allow residents from pocket three to access the commercial, as you can see, in pocket one. Pocket one can be developed in options, multifamily or retail commercial development. There are construction plans and site plans already submitted to the county showing that that pocket will now be developed as a multifamily use, and there will be no commercial. Recently, as we've come in with this PRS, staff has voiced two objections. One from transportation, and that is that schoolchildren from pocket one and two should be able to walk across the bridge to pocket three to access the school to the south. And also, general concerns about connectivity from the planning commission. So to address connectivity right up front, what you're seeing here is pocket three, which is the westernmost pocket of the existing plan development. And the interconnection of pocket three with the development that's to occur to the west. That pocket cannot be developed. There's a condition in the rezoning that requires no development in pocket three until Gate Dancer Road and that connection is made. So there is connectivity. As you know, in SMU 6, there are policies that encourage not only interconnectivity within the property, but also within the general area. So there's a couple of issues that we have with respect to the pedestrian bridge. Let me first by defining floodway. And if you have technical questions, our technical staff is here to speak with you and to answer any questions that you have. Floodway is defined as an area of the floodplain that should be kept free of obstructions to allow floodwaters to move downstream. Rivers and streams where FEMA has prepared detailed engineering studies are typically designated as floodways. But more importantly, for the layperson like me, these are the areas where the water is likely to be the deepest and the fastest. There's a bunch of calculations here that I don't understand, but they're putting it there here on the record. But what these mean is, this is very fast water flow. Now, what I understand from our engineers is you have the floodplain. So if you look at this graphic, you're going to see the floodplain in blue. But the dark blue lines to the exterior are the floodway. And again, I'm sure I'm using these terms incorrectly, but it's a no-rise area. So it's an area that you have to keep improvements out of. And what this means conceptually is this little bridge going 300 feet now has to be 945 feet in span. We have a number of correspondence from staff in the record talking about the fact that the standards that we have to meet are FDOT standards for a pedestrian bridge. That's very different than we thought going in, and we had discussions with staff originally. Under the FDOT standards, much of this walkway will be over dry land, except for during this 100-year flood event, which it may be wet. Again, you can see the small wetland and the huge span that the bridge is going to have to span 945 feet. We've also included a graphic of how this would be built under FDOT standards. And I'll allow you to ask questions of our technical folks and our engineers, but it has to be very high and very long. This, to me, is sort of the biggest graphic issue that we have. You know, originally, we went in and I think the thought, at least our thought, like many other waters and rivers and wetlands that you have within developments, is that we would build a pedestrian path over the waterway to connect the two pockets. Unfortunately, the problem is, number one, that we have a floodway, right? We can't impact that 945 feet. And the county determination of July 23rd says that we have to meet FDOT standards. So the graphic on the left is what I think we all thought we would be building or something similar. And the graphic on the right is an example of what an FDOT pedestrian bridge looks like. It's exactly the kind of bridges that go over state rights of way. We believe, and we've submitted a legal memo with backup documentation and cases for you, that an exaction, it would be an illegal exaction if you enforce this pedestrian bridge under these conditions. An exaction occurs when a government imposes a condition on a property in exchange for a land use approval. This happens all the time, right? But when determining if an exaction is prohibited, of course, a court is going to ask two things. Whether an essential nexus exists between the condition and the legitimate state purpose. Here, we can see that, you know, there's probably a nexus. But if the essential nexus does exist, are the conditions roughly proportional to the impact of the proposed development? And that's where I'm going to be concentrating my time. According to the case law that I've submitted, the government bears the burden of proof on both of these elements. There's no precise mathematical calculation, but the nature and extent of the impact of the proposed development has to be roughly proportional. Generalized statements detailing the necessary connection between the condition and the proposed development are not sufficient under Florida law to meet this requirement. Basically, boiling it down and determining whether it's roughly proportional, the court has considered the property owner's right to exclude others and how the exaction affects their right to exclude as well. Now, planning commission, the objective from planning commission is based on Objective 19, and that the general impact of the walkway will increase connectivity. We agree, it probably would increase connectivity. The walkway will connect approximately 60 homes via pedestrian path only. Therefore, while the removal of the walkway will marginally reduce the interconnectivity of pocket three, the intent of the comprehensive plan is met through connectivity with the other similar development that I've already spoken to you to the west of the development. Of course, anytime you go in with a rezoning, you have to engineer the project. And as we started to engineer this project, we understood that this path was really a problem for us. Staff has taken the position that it must be built according to FDOT standards, which requires significantly elevated as well as a significant span of almost 1,000 square feet. I submitted FDOT costs and a letter from our engineers stating that the cost to construct the bridge according to the standards that staff has required would cost approximately $1.5 million. So we weigh, right, the $1.5 million with some increased connectivity and a more convenient route for schoolchildren to walk. I do not see the rough proportionality in that requirement. We respectfully request your approval of this PRS. And just to recap, we'd like to relocate one cross-access point to align with the updated development pattern to the north, eliminate the interim resource recovery facility as a permitted use, and remove the condition requiring pedestrian access from pocket two to pocket three. Again, I'm happy to talk a little bit more about the exaction argument, and our engineers are here to talk about specific standards. I do want to say, though, that if I was you, my first initial thought would be, well, let's reman this back and let staff work it out with the applicant in order to come to some middle ground. We've been doing that since February. I did have a conversation after the FDOT standard was required by Rick Cabrera with Mike Williams. And Mike told me that it was very important that I bring this issue up for the board, that it was not an issue that staff was willing to move on, and that it was a board decision. So we would ask you to take that into consideration. We are available to answer any questions. I would like to reserve any additional time for rebuttal, if I may.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? That's in the room. Anyone wish to speak as a proponent? Anyone wish to speak as an opponent? Anyone wish to speak as an opponent? Applicant, you waive your time? Your rebuttal time?
This is Adam Gormley. Sorry to interrupt. I think I'd like to have, Mike Williams is on the line, and I'd like to have him respond because I think some of the information, we have a different perspective on what we're requiring and what is required for this project. I believe Mike will testify that the floodway is in fact 200 feet, and there are other options that can be considered from what has been presented here today. So I'd like Mike Williams to address that for the benefit of the board, please.
Okay, Mr. Williams, you're recognized.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Miller. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. So even in Ms. Batzel's graphic, she showed the floodway and then the floodplain, and the floodplain was, I think, a little over 900 feet. With the floodway being, it was a little more than 200, but I believe it was less than 300. And bridges get built all the time with piling and things in the floodway. You just have to account for that when you're doing the design, and you have to account for how that impacts the flow of water in the channel. So I think that's important to note in this. You know, we never got to the point with the applicant where we were looking at specifics of the design and what the impacts were. We were just giving them sort of general criteria for what would need to be looked at. And then if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. I see no questions. Well, now I see questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have my hand up.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. I must go back to the applicant now and ask if she lacks any rebuttal time. If you have five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. I'd like to call either Twin Tran or Brian Skidmore up to talk about the issue with the floodplain initially so that she can clarify.
Yeah, five minutes.
Tran, I'm with Ardua Group, 4921 Memorial Highway, 33634. I'm the engineer record for the South Creek Development. We've been working on this project for about two years. We've been coordinating with Kyle Dolman for the flood rise. So we're in the process right now of revising the FEMA map. Currently, we haven't received the approval yet, but the exhibits that show the floodplain and floodway actually are reduced to match the county's current watershed model. The effective model right now, sorry, the effective FEMA map right now is actually even larger. So we've been modeling this area for a while, and it's a very sensitive drainage model. We've had a hard time, you know, showing no increase whatsoever in the creek for the development itself when we don't even, we actually haven't even put the bridge model in yet. But any kind of increases in this area is very sensitive. The main channel itself is 30 feet wide, and it's about eight feet deep. So in a mean annual storm, the water will come up to the top of that main channel. And the existing grade around the floodway, which is about 370 feet, will be about four foot of water standing on top of the existing floodplain up to the water level for the 100-year. So you're always going to have some bit of water standing in there from a low mean annual storm all the way up to the 100-year storm. So we just have concerns with, even with the bridge structure, you're going to have scour, maintenance, nuisance with, you know, kids crossing there and playing in the area. I think that's about all I had. Okay, thank you.
So I would also like to point you to documentation that's in the record, which is from Rick Cabrera. It's an email dated July 21st. And it specifically talks about the requirements for a pedestrian bridge, and that these requirements are really no different hydraulically than a vehicular bridge with a crossing being through a FEMA regulatory floodway. A no-rise analysis will be required. And my subsequent conversation was also consistent with this documentation that I've submitted into the record. So I just want to put that on the record. If you are inclined to impose this condition, obviously, we have the exaction issue, and we'll have to make some business decisions. But I would ask that you consider a modification, then, to the condition that requires that the pedestrian bridge be built at the earlier of the development of pocket two or pocket three. Pocket two, of course, is going to be developed first because pocket three is limited to the development of Gate Dancer Road, which is planned a little while out. Our concern is really this. Pocket two develops out, we build this bridge across this floodway, and then we have a construction zone where folks, I mean, regardless of if you put a sign or you try to keep them out with construction fencing, this is just an attractive nuisance for children. You're going to have heavy equipment coming in and out of there. You're going to have ground being tilled up, and it's just not a safe place for people to be. So we would ask that if you do make the decision to impose this condition, that you would allow a modification that reads that the bridge does not have to be built or constructed until site development of the later of pocket two or pocket three. We are available for any questions that you have, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. If the board is imposed to leave the provision in place that requires the pedestrian crossing, I'd like to ask staff's opinion of the modification that was just proposed.
Who's going to answer that?
Let me, Commissioner, I'll ask Brian Grady to respond to that.
Development Services, again, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. Development Service staff would not have an issue with that condition. I would think it'd be appropriate to hear from the Planning Commission staff, since this is also rooted in the plan. But from our perspective, that we don't have an objection to that provision.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I still have the floor, I would like to hear Planning Commission's opinion as well.
Is there a Planning Commission staff member there? Let's address this. Okay.
Yes, I'm here, sir. Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. For the record, would the condition, would the modification, could that be read in the record again so I can hear that more clearly?
No.
Can someone read in the record again?
Yes, my proposal would be to modify the condition that would require a pedestrian crossing to be constructed at the later of site development of Pocket 2 or Pocket 3. Currently, it says the earlier of site development for Pocket 2 or Pocket 3.
Okay, thank you for that. Again, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission. The Planning Commission would be okay with moving that to a later phase in the development?
Commissioner White, you still have the floor.
So I would just like to ask staff, is it, is it an accurate characterization, then, to say that in this minor modification request that they've asked for three modifications? Is that right? Actually, I may be seeing four here.
Yes, four.
Commissioners, they've asked for access changes to the pedestrian bridge, which is one. They've asked for cross-access points to the northern boundary of Pocket 2. They've asked to delete a resource facility because that interim use is no longer necessary. And then they've asked to reconfigure a stormwater pond in the building envelope of Pocket 1.
Okay. So my motion, then, is to approve three of those four requested modifications, to continue to impose the pedestrian bridge requirement, and to accept the modifications that were read into the record.
I'll second. I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner White, did you also approve the item itself with those modifications? Is that your motion?
Yes, sir, that's the intent of the motion.
Okay, all right.
To approve the item with three out of the four modifications approved, to continue to impose the pedestrian bridge crossing and to accept the modifications or conditions, I think is the proper term, that were read into the record.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, and that's a perfect solution, given what we are presented with today, Commissioner White, to move it forward but keep the bridge. I think it is important to give the children not only a convenient route to school, but a safe route to school through the development, no matter how much it costs. And I'm sure things can be worked out. So thanks very much for suggesting this way through. I will support the motion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Obermann, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I also, I do like this modification, and I do like the compromise here. I just have a couple of questions. The pedestrian bridge size, in terms of its length and cost, may or may not change with this particular modification. It's the timing of the development of Pod 3 that is being negotiated here, is my understanding. So my question is, until Pocket 3 is developed and the bridge come in afterwards, the Pocket 1 and 2 will be required to get onto 301 to go around to the school, so there'll be no walking access to the school for that community. Is that accurate? I'd like to see Figure 6 on Page 7 as backup as to be able to clarify. Can Mr. Gormley help us with that, or someone make that more clear?
Mission reads there's Pockets 1, 2, and 3. The required pedestrian bridge, and Michelle Heinrich put a graphic to show this, would be, the timing would be at the later of development of Pocket 2 or 3. So there's a potential that Pocket 1 is developed before, and Pocket 2, before the bridge is in place. Ask Michelle to demonstrate that on the graphic, please.
Okay, great. I think that makes it more clear. So basically, until 2 and 3 are developed, Pocket 1, which includes multifamily, is that accurate?
Yes.
Will be required to get in their car and drive around on 301 or walk along 301 to get to the school. Is that accurate?
It creates the, there's a potential for Pocket 1 to be developed and be the only piece developed without access to Gate Dancer through Pockets 2 or 3. That is correct.
Is there any understanding or any plan for what it'll take to get 2 and 3 moving forward? Are they going to be developed simultaneously? Or it seems as though, what I understand from Ms. Batzel, is that Pocket 3 is obviously the last piece, correct? And that's the piece?
We don't know. But Pocket 3 cannot move forward until the dancer is constructed. So it's contingent on an external factor. So we don't know whether Pocket 2 or Pocket 3 will move forward first.
Okay, okay. And then the size and determinant of the bridge will take into consideration the 100-foot plane, because we actually have seen water in the 100-foot plane in the last four or five years, and not necessarily this.
I think there was some misunderstanding between staff and the consultants, but the footers going in, because of the velocity of that water, you have to build the bridge in a more structural way so that there's not issues. And it's going to have to go up high. So of course, you know, it's going to be a very large, very expensive bridge to build. There is included in your materials the walking routes for children, if you would like to look at those. They were part of the PowerPoint. I didn't go over those because of time, but they are in your materials, and we can put that up for you if you'd like to, Commissioner Oberman.
No, I'm good. I just, I do recognize that the project originally was approved with a bridge, and in order for people to come get to school and throughout the community, and I think that's important. And one of the unfortunate risks of staged development is that there might be expenses that we don't know about. So, but at the end of the day, the bridge was committed to before, and I want to make sure that commitment is sustained in this motion. I'll support the motion, but I do want to make sure that we don't come back later and go, well, it's too expensive, and, you know, you can't stand on it. And I think it's critically important that it is an assumption that we will continue with having that cross-access available no matter what. I'll stop there.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I also think that that cross-access is extremely important. I can't imagine not allowing it after, or not making that a continued condition after all is said and done about the safe walks to school. Does the school exist? The school does not exist right now.
I believe it's, Commissioner, it is under construction. It is an approved site, and funds have been distributed to the school board for construction of it, and it is under construction at this time.
And when will it open? When is it scheduled to open?
I believe it's scheduled to open for the 2021 school year.
And how many homes are constructed now? Or what are we talking about in terms of before this bridge is built, kids needing connection to the school?
If I may, I just got notified the school is actually opening this year.
Okay, okay. And how many homes are there under construction, occupied? Do we know that? I'm just wondering, right now, how many people, how many families it affects, how many children? The delay.
Commissioner Kemp, there is no construction on this site yet. The walkway will only connect 60 homes via the pedestrian path, so I don't know how many children that is, but it would be 60 homes. Right now, there's nothing under construction on Pocket 1, Pocket 2, or Pocket 3.
Okay. And I'd just like to ask Mike Williams, just, I'll be supporting it, but I'd like to ask Mike Williams, because what we saw up there was two pictures, one of a, you know, seeming appropriate pedestrian bridge crossing, and then we saw this huge FDOT bridge, and we heard Ms. Batzel said there's been all kinds of communication and back and forth without relief. But Mr. Williams, when you talked, you suggested that there actually has been very little discussion but for, you know, the FDOT plan. So could you just, Mr. Williams, clarify a little bit about those discussions and what might be possible? I mean, what we saw was, again, an FDOT over the massive highway pedestrian bridge, and I'd just like to clarify if it's true that something like that, at this moment even, would be a requirement.
Yes, Commissioner, again, Mike Williams with Development Services. We, primarily the discussions we've had with the applicant have been about the floodplain and the floodway. We have not evaluated the structure itself, or the bridge, or what would be needed for the bridge. In other words, could they put, the size of that structure is really dependent, the greatest thing is dependent on the span. In other words, how far do you have to go between piers or piles? And if it's a 300 or 400-foot span, then it will be a pretty substantial structure. But again, as I said earlier, you often see piles or piers in the floodway on projects, you know, all over the state. So that's not unusual. You just have to account for that in the hydraulics and looking at your floodplain modeling.
Okay.
Haven't gotten that far with the applicant.
Thank you. And I'll be supporting the motion, but I think it's, I would not support a motion not to have that connectivity, that pedestrian connectivity that we have emphasized so much and which the applicant presented as part of the original application as a condition they would fulfill.
Senator, further discussion, we have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman. Commissioner Merman.
Yes. Yes.
Oberman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carries 7 to 0.
Mr. Moreta.
Yes, sir. Ready for Item 3. This is personal appearance 20-0401. This takes us to northwest Hillsborough County. It's southwest, about 720 feet southwest of the intersection of Race Track Road and Lenox Boulevard. Commissioners, this is a planned development. The existing use on the parcel is the subject of this modification. Is approved for a hotel that allows 120 rooms or 72,000 square feet, whichever is more restrictive. The applicant is proposing to add in a mini warehouse use specific to this parcel, and they're proposing to calibrate the amount of the mini warehouse based on the trip generation that would be equivalent with the hotel use that's already approved for this site. Staff is recommending approval of it subject to conditions. We feel it's consistent and compatible with the area. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Morning, have you been sworn in?
Morning, William Malloy, 325 South Lord. I haven't been sworn in.
You what? Okay, swear in, please.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Commissioners, good morning. As Mr. Moreta indicated, this is a very simple request. It's just a trade-off of entitlements within the PD. We're exchanging some hotel use for mini storage, mini warehouse use. There's no change in density or trip generation. My clients are here, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone there who'd like to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wish to speak as an opponent? Applicant, waive this time.
May the prayer.
There's a motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second. Second by Commissioner Obermann. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized. Is she there?
She probably forgot to take her hand down.
Okay, all right.
She's muted as well.
Okay. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Obermann to approve Item E3. Senator, further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp. Commissioner Kemp. Merman.
Yes.
Oberman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And is Commissioner Kemp still muted?
Yes, she is.
Commissioner Kemp, your vote, please.
Commissioner Kemp, you're still muted. Commissioner Kemp, unmute your microphone. She hasn't undone that yet, so let's just move on.
Motion carries 6 to 0.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioner. This brings us to Item E4, personal appearance 20-0527, located at 11605 East US Highway 92. The applicant has pursued approval about this search. Commissioners, this is a modification to a specific site plan, planned development site plan, which was approved in 2019. The applicant is making several minor adjustments, and Brian Grady will walk you through those adjustments geographically on the site plan. Staff is recommending approval. For the most part, the site is adhering to all the external setbacks and buffers. The only change is in one slight area where there will be a slight reduction, and there is some increase in square footage in some of the internal buildings, all within the 3% that's allowed in the minor modification. Again, staff is recommending approval.
I'm Grady Hillsborough, County Development Services. As Joe pointed out, the location of the project is on south side of US 92. Existing facilities are doing additional expansions of the project, placing the areas that are proposed into the modified building sizes or identified mill, mostly internal, at least to the residential that's most affected, the east. As a general, the three buildings that are being affected by this change, our staff has no objection. This is recommending approval. On this web, we're available for questions.
Okay, is applicant here? Is applicant here?
meal, mostly internal, at least to the residential that's most affected, the east. As a general, the three buildings that are being affected by this change, staff has no objection. This isn't recommending approval. On this, we're available for questions.
Okay, is applicant here? Is applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Have you been sworn in?
Yes, yes.
Commissioners, hope all as well. My name's Jim Thomas. I'm with McNeil Engineering. We're at 15957 North Florida Avenue, phone number 813-968-1081. Represent Chris McNeil and McNeil Engineering. This project, as Brian stated, we're assisting the client on the rezoning, with enlarging the building envelopes. And what triggered the rezoning was the proximity, the 500 foot threshold from the PD line. I'm here for any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Applicant waves their rebuttal time. What's your pleasure?
Move approval, Commissioner Merman.
Motion by Commissioner Merman. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White. Is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to E5 on the agenda. This is personal appearance 20-0529 located at 1053 Moody Road, which is generally at 301 in the Alamo River. Commissioners, this is a request to modify a planned development that was approved for a private marina. There's a number of minor adjustments internal to the site. Biggest adjustment is to account for an outdoor area where alcoholic beverages are proposed to be served. This is a private marina. The only customers that will be provided an opportunity would be members of the marina. The geographic layout of the site plan, again, the biggest thrust of it is for the 4,000 square foot additional area that's being proposed, an outdoor alcoholic beverage area. I'll let Brian Grady walk through that site plan so you can see where that is at geographically on the site. Staff is recommending approval of this, the site plan adjustments, and also adjustments to the conditions to acknowledge that this is going to be a private marina. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services Division, on the Elmo here. Have the proposed changes. If you go through them real quickly, they're asking for a seven foot reduction in the setback along the western boundary, as shown here for the main building. They're asking for a slight increase in the overall square footage of the building from 17,640 to 18,518. And the other change is to expand the area that will be allowable for alcohol sales. Original approval limited to 600 square feet generally in this area internally. They're asking for an outdoor area in that area be included to allow for consumption of the alcohol out along the river. Again, as Joe mentioned, this is a private marina. This facility will not be open to the general public. There's existing conditions regarding operating hours for the drinking establishment and also a proposition on outdoor music based on those existing conditions and the location of the outdoor area along 301. Staff has no objection to those changes. We'll be available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant present? Have you been sworn in?
Ms. Patricia Ortiz. My address is 2810 North Central Avenue, Tampa, 33602.
Have you been sworn in, Ms. Ortiz?
And I believe staff has adequately identified the request.
Have you been sworn in?
Not been sworn in.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Proceed, please.
I'll start again. I'll introduce myself. My name is Patricia Ortiz. My address is 2810 North Central Avenue, Tampa, 33602. I'm here on behalf of Innovative Design Partners, and we are asking for some minor modifications to the approved plan development, specifically a minor increase in the size of the boat storage area. This request will have some minor implications on the development standards as approved, specifically about a one.
Motion by Commissioner Merman. Second by Commissioner Merman. First motion by Commissioner Merman. Second by Commissioner White. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I was actually going to move approval for this as well. I am pleased, after spending quite a bit of time growing up in a water community off at the Chesapeake Bay, having access to boat storage and also entertainment along waterways, especially that goes out to the bay, is a great economic engine. So I'm looking forward to supporting this motion. I'll stop there.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioner. This brings us to item E6. This is DRI 19-1014. The applicant is Revival Ministries International, Inc. Commissioners, the proposal is to rescind a development order that is covering, is known as a Sunway Development Regional Impact. This particular site is located northeast of Broadway and I-75. It's also covered by Plan Development 19-0432. Commissioners, the development order has sufficiently worked through and exhausted all the mitigation required. It really serves no purpose at this point from a regulatory perspective. Property, if this is rescinded, would continue to be regulated by the Plan Development, which covers uses and has several conditions associated with the development of the site. Staff is recommending approval of rescinding the DRI. Thank you.
Is the applicant here? Before the applicant starts to talk, members, I know that this issue also has some facts pertaining to this concerning noise around this particular church. This is not anything we will discuss today. This is in the hands of the Environment Protection Commission and not this land use meeting. So therefore, anything dealing with the noise issue will not be discussed by this commission today. That will be in the hands of the Environment Protection Commission. Just want to say that. Applicant, have you been sworn in?
No, sir.
Please swear the applicant in.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Toomey. My office address is 14031 North Dale Mayberry Highway, Tampa, Florida, 33618. I'm here representing the applicant, Revival Ministries International. Petition DRI 19-1042 is a request to rescind the development order for Sunway Development of Regional Impact, DRI 144. To give you a brief overview, if you take a look at the Elmo, the Sunway DRI was originally approved on November 10, 1987. The Sunway property comprises of about 80 acres. Generally, it's generally located northeast of East Broadway Avenue and I-75. The future land use designation is UMU 20. The Sunway DRI was approved for two development alternatives, A or B. Alternative A consists of a maximum of 120,000 square feet of retail uses. Alternative B consists of three phases of a maximum build out of 2,700,000 square feet of office and a 300-room hotel. In accordance with Resolution R 96-17, the developer elected alternative A. Subsequently, a construction of 120 square feet AutoNation auto retail establishment was completed in November 1987 on approximately 31.18 acres of the total 80 acres. 5,000 square feet was developed by Circle K as a convenience store and gas station. In 2001, Revival Ministries International acquired the property from AutoNation USA, and since then, no other development has occurred. RMI currently operates the site for church, Bible school, and office uses. The build out date for the Sunway DRI lapsed on November 29, 2000, and the development order expired on June 1, 2005. In October 2019, a PD rezoning related to this DRI application to increase the size of the PD was approved with PD 19-0432 by the VOCC to expand the current church campus and to allow development of uses accessory to the church. The Circle K gas station and two other parcels are also part of this recently approved PD. With the rescission of the DRI, the site would be subject to all development regulations, as Mr. Moreta said, and entitlement stipulated in the conditions of approval for PD 19-0432. Staff finds that the Sunway DRI meets all criteria for rescinding this development order that expired in 2005. Therefore, on behalf of the church, we'd like to thank development staff, planning commission, and the county attorney's office for working with us this past year on this rescission. This concludes my presentation, and we respectfully request your approval of this DRI rescission.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Applicant waves a rebuttal time. What's your pleasure?
Move approval, Commissioner Merman.
Second by Commissioner Merman. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White. Is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item F1 on the agenda. This is application number RZPD 19-1421 located at 6605 East Hillsborough Avenue. Size of the site is 9.8 acres. Commissioners, this is a proposal to rezon from the CG and CI to a planned development to permit 217,000 square feet of offices. It has all approvals. Commissioners, this was pulled from the consent agenda as it didn't meet the board's new criteria for consent. No oral argument is associated with this case.
Is applicant here?
Good morning, Chair. This is David Wright of TSP Companies. Our address is PO Box 1016, Tampa, Florida, 33601, and I have been sworn in. This is a request to allow an appropriate infill development within an existing commercial and industrial corridor. The request is compatible with the existing surrounding uses in both physical scale and intensity and provides both a transition and buffer between the residential properties to the south and the higher intensity commercial and industrial uses along Hillsborough Avenue. Suncoast Credit Union is a very well-established entity in both Hillsborough County and the state of Florida and has owned the property for over 20 years and utilizes the property as an office campus for its financial institution. The request is to allow an increase in office space well within the allowable FAR of the OC 20 future land use category in order to allow a reasonable expansion of the credit union offices. The request is supported by the zoning hearing master, planning commission staff, development services staff, county transportation staff, and the Florida Department of Transportation. Further, there is no opposition, and I appreciate your consideration. And I and Steve Henry of Lincoln Associates are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, board members. What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman. Pardon?
There's no public comment?
No, not on this.
Okay.
Let me explain. On the section F, the only public comment you have are those that are party of record. And Mr. Wright was party of record. Okay, so now, what's your pleasure?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Merman. Second by Commissioner Overman. Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moreta. Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is F2. This is rezoning 20-0064. This is located approximately 2,000 feet east of the intersection of Lithia Pinecrest and Lithia State Strive. Proposal is for a standard district. Existing zoning is AR, and the request is to rezone to ASC1, would allow approximately 50 homes. Commissioners, this at one time was on, I believe it was back in February, it was a while back before we got into the COVID. It was pulled from the consent agenda, and then it was continued to address enhancements and compatibility to the site design and possibly architectural standards. The applicant has reacted to that by proposing eight conditions. Staff is recommending approval, it was recommending approval at the initial consideration of this application, and is still recommending approval. And at this point, I'll turn it over to the applicant to speak to the conditions.
Is applicant here? Have you been sworn in?
Yes, I have.
Are you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, I'm Michael Horner, 14502 North Dale Mayberry Highway, representing the applicant and the owner in this matter. As Mr. Moreta indicated, this in fact was heard before you were aboard some time ago, before COVID affected our lives and certainly the caseload here. We appreciate everything you've done to bring this board hearing together this morning. This property is 89 acres. It is south of Lithia Pinecrest Road, is west of County Road 39. This is receiving, has received unanimous recommendations of approval by Development Services, as Mr. Moreta just indicated, planning commission finding it consistent with all plan policies, the future land use element. Likewise, the hearing master found this case consistent with all plan policies, accepted staff findings, and also recommended approval to you. The site has no wetlands on site. It does have a mapped significant upland habitat designation. That means our client is willing and required by the county ordinance to set aside 25% of this property. That will result in about 23 acres of passive land that we will incorporate into our site development. This parcel is adjacent to approximately 270 acres of property that is currently zoned for one acre, whether it's ASC1, ASC1, or PD zoning. This was declared surplus years ago by Swift Mud. Swift Mud reached out to all jurisdictional governmental agencies and entities to see if anyone wanted to purchase this. No one offered to purchase, therefore is declared surplus, and my client was the highest bid on this property acquisition. We have amended to ASC1, Commissioners, and we did that at the direction of Commissioner White, looking at the design opportunities for rural design features, architectural standards, the first time, I might add, in the ASC1 district in Hillsborough County. Mr. Grady tells me that you were all emailed a copy of the eight restrictions that we filed. These are very detailed, go into shutter design, fence design, architectural controls, pitched roof, also reflects a 200-foot barrier or passive buffer area, if you will, off Lithia Pinecrest Road. So driving by post-development, you will just see trees and wouldn't be able to see the houses. This property, once it removes the 25% of the habitat area as well as roads and retention, will probably have a maximum achieved lot count of 50 to 52. Those sketch plans were filed into the record before the zoning hearing master and part of your backup agenda today. In terms of the traffic generation, I would just note the staff did a worst-case projection, assuming 89 lots versus the actual 50 to 52, and therefore, our impact would be much less. If you are so inclined to approve this, this will be the most restricted ASC1 zoning district in Hillsborough County. It's our pleasure to stand before you. Happy to answer any questions. concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I have one person that is a party of record on this issue, Matthew Henderson.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to comment that my family's been involved in agriculture in this area for about 40 years. And, you know, it's a...
Excuse me, Chairman, would need to be sworn in.
Have you been sworn in, Mr. Henderson? No, sorry.
No, sir.
Please swear, man.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Raise your right hand, Mr. Henderson. You're going in the military. No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I just very briefly wanted to comment that we've been involved, whether it was cattle, strawberry, or citrus in this area for 40 years. And it's a tough, it's a tough property to use agriculturally without having to clear the whole thing. And just in my opinion, it's better used for wooded home sites. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Members, what's your pleasure?
Move the item.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Murman to approve item F2. Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion? I'm sorry, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. While I do see that they're making some modifications, I am still very concerned about two items that are impacted by this area. One is the lack of capacity in the middle school area that is going to be problematic, but a reduction in the number of homes will certainly help. The other is the fact that this is a significant wildlife area and corridors. So I would hope that the applicant makes sure that in allocating that 25%, that it does facilitate pathways rather than, you know, a chunk set off to the side that doesn't allow for connectivity. Obviously, that is something that will come in design. Seen yet, but I just wanted to make sure that that's on the public record. So thank you very much.
All right. Seeing no further discussion. There was motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Murman. Please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven and zero.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item F3. This is a rezoning number 20-0065, located at 1106 Lithia Pinecrest Road. It's approximately a little bit over a half an acre. Existing zoning is ASC1, which is residential agricultural one lot, minimum acre. Request is to BPO, which is Business Professional Office, with a restriction. The restrictions are going to include architectural standards for the building, inclusive that the building appear residential appearance. It also has roof pitch requirements. Staff is recommending approval with those restrictions on this BPO district. This has been pulled from the consent agenda. It does not meet the board's consent criteria that was recently implemented.
Is the applicant here? You have 10 minutes, sir.
I'm Michael Horner, 14502 North Dale Mayberry Highway, for the record, representing the applicant and owner. Both the brother and the uncle are here of the property owner. It's Donna B. Smith. This request comes to you with unanimous recommendations of approval. This is only a 0.5-acre tract, Commissioners, just south of the intersection of Lithia Pinecrest, Del Shuld Road, which is just south of Lumsden. No waivers to locational criteria are necessary. We filed for the BPO R and incorporated the additional design requirements for the billing pitch, slope roof design that Mr. Moreta just addressed. As you can see by the zoning, we are surrounded by the north, all the eastern boundary, east side of Lithia Pinecrest Road, and the south track, which is BPO. All of those are unrestricted except for one. We are the only restricted BPO on the western side. This will only be a 2,500 to 4,000 square foot billing maximum. It will be closed on evenings during the evening hours as well as weekends. This is a compatible use. Again, receiving unanimous recommendations of approval, consistent with plan policies. Mr. Hearing Master also found this consistent and approvable. This is a quiet use. We have to meet all type B screening. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. There's no party of record. Members, what's your pleasure?
Move the item.
Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner White to approve item F3. Seeing no discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven and zero.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item F4. This is a rezoning for a standard district, number 20-0247. It's generally located at the northwest corner of the interstate and Fowler Avenue. More specifically, is 165 feet south of the intersection of East 19th Avenue and North Central Avenue. Commissioners, this is a 1.3-acre site. It's adjacent to property that is in the city of Tampa to the south of the site. Moving south before you get to Fowler, you would actually be in the city of Tampa. The thrust of this request, the existing zoning is neighborhood commercial, and the thrust of it is to zone to general commercial, which is the next zoning district of intensity moving up. And the applicant is proposing restrictions. They're restricting out some of the more intensive drive-through uses, including drive-through restaurants and convenience uses. They're also proposing operating hour restrictions. They're restricting outdoor speakers. And as I, again, the primary thrust is to get auto dealership activities on the site. So they're retaining some of the CN and CG uses with those restrictions, and they've restricted out some of the uses in the CG district as well. The applicant's also proposing a 50-foot setback to the north. In that area, if the site were to be developed commercially, it would typically require a 20-foot buffer. So the building, for all practical purposes, is almost twice the area of setback that it would normally be. Staff took that into consideration, and we are recommending approval of this district where the R conditions. It was pulled from, well, did not make it to consent because it has split recommendations. The planning commission found it inconsistent with the plan, and the zoning hearing master found it recommended approval. Having said that, we conclude our presentation. We're available for questions. Thank you.
App, I'm sorry. Is applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Michael Horner, 14502 North Dale Mayberry Highway, representing the applicant and owner. I have been sworn. I am representing Morphin LLC. Commissioners, this is a unique site that we have been working hard on for almost a year. We appreciate staff support. This site was formerly a porn theater that was a result of a number of sheriff office complaints, as you can imagine. As we counted them up, we got over 200. My clients acquired this property some years ago. They completely raised the structures, completely raised and improved, kicked out all the vagrants and transients. It's been a difficult process. This is an upscale dealership being proposed. You should know that this property is actually split by the jurisdictional line, the city of Tampa. Actually, all the gray area south of the colored is city of Tampa. So we have four parcels under ownership. Three of those are within the city of Tampa. I would note the city of Tampa has designated those sites community commercial 35, one of the most intensive plant sectors in the city of Tampa, as well as CI zoning, commercial intensive, which you're familiar with, is one of the more intensive zoning districts in the city of Tampa as well. We are giving up all of the, what we consider incompatible fast food uses, CN uses, such as fast food, drive-through, 7-Eleven stores, convenience stores, Wawa gas stations. We have done that even though it's approved and it abuts those single-family lots for years. My client then went into a process of extracting all of those objectionable uses and then adding all of the restrictions that Joe just mentioned. That includes extensive building setbacks, enhanced buffer and screening, the opportunity for a building plan that precludes any doorways facing the north residential lots, restricted hours, no outside speakers, building design requirements, as well as no, again, building elevations and doors that are precluded from orienting themselves to the north side. This is a $4 million project, board members. My clients have worked hard in putting this deal together. We have no objections. We have had strong support from the community, as you can imagine, including stakeholders from other auto dealerships in the nearby vicinity. So we have taken a very difficult property. We think added so many restrictions, similar to the ASC1 that I just referenced. I think this will probably be the most restricted CG zoning district in Hillsborough County. Appreciate your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'd like to hear from the planning commission about how this was found inconsistent with the plan. I believe it's inconsistent with the Carrollwood community plan. So if they could clarify, please.
Planning Commission?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Melissa Leinhardt, planning commission staff, specifically regarding the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Plan. In order to prevent strip commercial development, this community plan vision statement encourages non-residential growth at designated community activity centers or new intersections that also meet the commercial locational criteria that's outlined in the future land use element. Because the site is not located within a designated community activity center and also does not meet commercial locational criteria, planning commission found the proposed rezoning inconsistent with the community plan decision.
Commissioner Smith?
Just to follow up. So are you saying that it's not only inconsistent with the Carrollwood community plan in that it doesn't fall within their designated commercial areas they wanted, but it also doesn't meet locational criteria in the broader comprehensive plan?
Yes, ma'am. I understand that exactly. Again, Melissa Leinhardt, planning commission staff. The staff report that's part of the backup does go into, I won't bore everyone with all the details, but it does go into very detailed explanation on why the site does not meet commercial locational criteria. It goes into detail about all the roadways that are affected, Fowler Avenue, Florida. And it does go into those details in the staff report. So I can confirm it does not meet commercial location.
Thank you. I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? What's your pleasure?
Move approval, Commissioner Murman.
Second, motion by Commissioner Murman. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White. So any further discussion? Any further discussion? Please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
No.
Commissioner Kemp?
No.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioner Kemp and Smith voted no.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item F5. This is the major modification of the existing plan development that was approved initially in 2003. Major modification 20-0108. It's located 345 east, the intersection of Bear's Avenue, Nebraska Avenue. It's on the north side of Bear's Avenue. Commissioners, the existing zoning on the site, not the existing use, existing use is essentially a golf driving range now at this point. But the existing zoning, the current plan development is approved for 180,000 square feet of CI uses and 60,000 square feet of general commercial and neighborhood commercial uses. It has also associated with it big box standards, which are associated to buildings of a certain size would have to adhere to the design standards. The thrust of this proposal is propose a second development option. The second development option is proposed to be 350 multifamily units and to retain 10,000 square feet of commercial. Commissioners, the proposal also, the second development option also proposes two access options. Now that I've provided an overview of what's existing and what's requested, Michelle Heinrich is going to walk you through the geography of the site, particularly the access proposed and the second option associated with the major modification. Staff is recommending approval of this particular site, and it was pulled because it didn't, from consent. It has all approvals. It was pulled from consent because it does not meet the board's new criteria to be placed on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Development Services, just to add to what Mr. Moreta was outlining for you. What I have shown here, hopefully that will come up, is a depiction of what's currently approved versus what is proposed as a second option. The figure one shows the existing approvals, which is generally a commercial project primarily to allow for a big box and surrounding out, commercial out parcels. The second development option, which is found on the other side, shows the proposal option that they would like to add where they are having a reduced intensity and size of commercial on Beerus and then multifamily predominantly within the remainder of the parcel. As Mr. Moreta stated, there is some access options that are available that staff reviewed. The first one, which is shown on the left, figure four, option A, is what the applicant proposed with access points along all of the public roadways that surround the site, which is Beerus, 12th, and Sinclair. A second option that was proposed by the applicant is much more limited in where you can see in the green, they still provide access on Beerus. However, the other access points are limited. points are limited. On 12th, it is an access that allows for exit only for southbound and westbound traffic, and then for Sinclair, only a westbound in. Transportation staff did review this, along with Development Services zoning, and we did propose option A, which provides for many more access points in utilizing the public roadways. That is what we have proposed in our conditions of approval. And also, as Mr. Moreta said, there is a design exception that has been found approvable for 12th Street, and that is included in the proposed conditions of approval, and we do recommend approval, subject to proposed conditions.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here? I can just warn them.
Entire team, our entire team has not been sworn in.
Okay, please swear the entire team in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I heard two people speaking there. Hold on, swear them in again, please.
Yes, sir. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Proceed, please.
Good morning. Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hill Ward Henderson. I'm here representing Nancy Kemp and Caroline Shepherd, who are the trustees of S&amp;N Trust, who are the owners of the property. I think staff did a very good job of outlining the request, but I am going to ask our planner, Isabel Albert, to come up and present testimony and evidence on consistency and compatibility with the comprehensive plan, and ask Michael Yates, our transportation engineer, to talk to you about both the access options as well as level of service on Bear's in this particular location.
Isabel Albert with Hap Associates assisting the applicant in the rezoning request for the site located on Bear's Avenue, east of Nebraska Avenue, more specifically along the CSX Railroad, south of Sinclair Hills Road, and west of 12th Street. The future land use of the site is office commercial, 20 units to the acre, which is similar to what is located to the west, and to the south is light industrial, and residential land use is located to the east and to the north. Site was approved in 2008 for a big box retail development for 180,000 square feet of commercial intensive uses, as well as 60,000 square feet of commercial general uses along Bear's Avenue. The plant development also included some buffering and screening along the east and to the north, and included the retention pond located as shown here. Proposed before, the proposal before you today is for a multifamily development that includes also commercial along Bear's Avenue. It is for 350 units, which is the minimum dwelling units permitted under, or required under the urban service area policy of the comprehensive plan. We are reducing the commercial square footage from 60,000 to 25,000 square feet of commercial neighborhood uses along Bear's Avenue. As you'll see, the buffer and screening is similar to what was previously approved. We had a neighborhood meeting in beginning of this year to show the local residents of what we are proposing. With that, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, more specifically the future land use element with the minimum density requirement in the urban service area, as well as consistent with the policy of neighborhood community development, which provides a transition between the heavy commercial and transitioning into the residential development to the northeast, and includes the community design component with the development. Development Services staff found the request compatible with the surrounding development, and the Planning Commission found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the, there was no objection from any reviewing agencies, and the hearing officer also recommended approval. With that concludes my presentation, and I'll transfer it to Michael Yates, who will go over the transportation. Thank you.
Bring out the presentation back up. Michael Yates, poll and traffic have been sworn. This proposed change results in a net reduction of PMP hour trips, as shown in the slide and presented in the traffic study. I want to go through the access options to kind of give you a little explanation as to why we did the access configuration the way we did. The proposed option and the option that was presented in our traffic study and also during ZHM was a left-in, right-in, right-out on Bear's, a full access to 12th aligning with 151st, and then a full access to Sinclair Hills aligning with West Lake Burrell Drive. And for a little explanation as to why that was done, was that Sinclair Hills and 151st are both identified as collector roadways, and then Bear's Avenue is identified as an arterial. So the only one that is not is 12th, and that is connecting both the collector roadways and the arterial roadway. And so as part of our recommendations and the design exception that we did was to improve 12th up to a modified county standards, improve the length, improve a sidewalk, and improve the existing design deficiencies that exist along there. The only other part I wanted to address in the traffic component, if we can go up to the Elmo, was the level of service of the roadway. This is from our traffic study that was done as part of the submittal. You can see the number on the far left. This is the existing traffic adjusted to peak season with the project traffic. And so if you add up those eastbound approaches, they total 1545. The level of service capacity in the peak direction, peak hour, is 1,900. So these counts were done with video data collection by an independent company. So when the level of service tables are done, they're usually based on raw machine counts and then converted. So this is a more specific and a more exact way to collect data. This is done in front of our site, was reviewed, and as you can see, part of the approved traffic study. So we are actually not on a failing section of Bear's Avenue. So I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any of the design criteria or the design exception if you have any questions.
Kami Corbett again with Hill Ward Henderson. I just want to clarify, we did propose two access options, the A and B, as Ms. Heinrich proposed, but we are comfortable with access option A that was recommended by staff and the zoning hearing master. We only wanted to present the other option in the event that the board wanted to consider limiting the access points to the development. And with that, I'd like to reserve any time that I had. Don't have any people speaking in opposition this morning. There are, I know you do have emails in your file with some people raising objections to multifamily dwelling units and to traffic, but since there are not going to be any opponents in the room here this morning, I'd like to reserve any time in case there are issues raised by commissioners that need to be addressed.
Thank you, ma'am. The only time that you will have is if a commissioner asks you to come back up. There's no allotted rebuttal time on the F section of the agenda. I understand that there was a Ms. Barbara Fight, F-I-T-E, was signed up to speak virtually, however, she did not properly file a request for oral arguments to speak. Am I correct? Slugwood or Mr. Gormley?
Mr. Chairman, she did not timely file her quest for oral argument, so she is not permitted to address the item.
Okay.
Commissioner Miller, it's Commissioner Smith. I'd like to address.
Commissioner Smith, I have Commissioner Overman before you. I'll call you, and you have to recognize Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm happy to see the changes. Obviously, it's an opportunity for a mixed development, both an opportunity for commercial as well as multifamily residential. I do believe that connectivity is critically important so that there's not a barrier between the single-family homes and the multifamily homes as a way of actually creating community, and I'm pleased to see that move forward. My only encouragement is I'd love to see it mixed income community, because there's an opportunity for, for, you know, community development in that particular area. But I would like to see option A retained. The connectivity on 12th is going to be important. Ways that we can actually mitigate arterial collectors overburdening is by creating greater connectivity. So I would support option, option A. But again, I'm pleased to see how this project has evolved over time and look forward to seeing an opportunity to work with the developers and the home builders in this particular project. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And going back to the citizen sign up, I saw that Ms. Fight had signed up on the sign up sheet, and I saw that she had testified in the zoning hearing master case, so she is a party of record. I, I hear that from Ms. Lundgren that she did not file timely for oral argument, but it's my understanding that neither did the applicant. And I know that the applicant, we had a proponent speak on F2 as well, who had not filed for oral argument. And commissioners, you know, I'm going to make a motion of whatever kind it takes to allow.
Before you make a motion, Commissioner Smith, let that, Ms. Lugren, address your concern that just brought forth.
All right.
Before you make a motion, okay?
Commissioner, on F2, the person who spoke as a proponent was actually Mr. Henderson, I believe, the applicant and property owner representative, so there have not been any proponents who were not qualified as filing, by filing oral argument, who have been allowed to speak. The applicants are given 10 minutes, or recommended to be given 10 minutes, to address these items that are pulled from consent, which is consistent with the board's policy, which it enacted when the rules on consent changed last year. Ms. Fight was advised about oral argument. She did attend the zoning hearing master meeting, at which time she was advised of the requirement for oral argument, as I've been advised by the staff who were there at the meeting.
Thank you. And commissioners, I believe we have a due process issue here for a few of the hearings. We're lucky it just cropped up on this one. The state of emergency has combined with our county's uniquely complicated red tape to make it unduly difficult for citizens to participate in this hearing and some of the other ones. Most of the items on our agenda went to a zoning hearing on February 18th. So citizens who participated in that hearing became parties of record, like Ms. Fight, but in order for them to speak to us in this final hearing today, they would have had to fill out that cumbersome two-page form called the Request for Oral Argument, and they would have had to submit it at the clerk's office within that little 10-day window, 15 business days after the zoning hearing, which in this case was March 10th to March 20th. Anyone who did not file that form by March 20th is being told that they are not allowed to speak to us today, five months later. That window between March 10th and March 20th was right when the state and local government were shutting everything down because of COVID. March 1st, the Florida Department of Health declared a public health emergency due to the pandemic. March 9th, the governor declared a state of emergency because of COVID. March 13th, county government canceled events and meetings and began closing public facilities, including libraries and parks, and limiting public gatherings. So people couldn't be expected to be filing these forms at the clerk's office downtown between March 10th and March 20th during this state of emergency. And by the way, those forms don't offer an email address or any form of electronic filing. The form just says to file it at the clerk's office, located at 419 Pier Street, Room 140, or PO Box 1110. I mean, this form is daunting enough in normal times, and it's an obstacle course in and of itself that no other county or city makes its citizens go through to speak to their elected officials about zoning issues in their neighborhoods. But in this case, the situation of the state of emergency on top of it has made for undue difficulty, and I do believe it's a, it's a due process issue. And I would like to ask the board to support a motion to allow Ms. Fight to speak, like we have done occasionally in, in the past, when our other citizens have run into this same issue here of all times. It's, it's just too cumbersome. I think we should allow Ms. Fight, who is a party of record, to speak to the record. So that's my motion.
Second.
That's a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp, Ms. Lugren. Is this motion, will this motion, if it passes, put us into any legal issues concerning the lady speaking? Just want to make it perfectly clear before we go forward with this motion.
Commissioner, I, yes, I would have some concern about allowing her to speak, considering that the applicant is certainly able to object to that. We could ask the applicant if she objects to Ms. Fight participating and speaking only to the record as a party of record, only to what she spoke about at the zoning hearing master, but, you know, I'm not aware of a specific, similar situation in the past where we've allowed a party of record who did not file at all to speak when no other opponent parties of record are allowing their time or otherwise giving them the opportunity to speak on their behalf.
If this passes, does this cause any legal issues? That's my question.
It advises you that it would be necessarily dispositive, but it could be a risk to the outcome of the proceeding.
And would this set a precedent, if this passes, that we would have to do this? We could, would this set a precedent?
Commissioners, I don't believe this would set a precedent. It wouldn't be a binding action going forward, but I would, you know, I would, again, express that the outcome of this could be, could be uncertain and a future potential challenge if, if there was in the future.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lugren. Under this section, the applicant does not have any rebuttal time because of the way this situation is, and I think that if we pass this motion, I think we're setting a precedent that this could happen over and over again and could put us in a legal situation that I don't think we need to get ourselves into. I understand, Ms. Smith, your motion, I truly do. I understand the situation that it caused specifically with the pandemic. However, there are rules that we have to follow, and I think that Ms. Lugren has painted that picture out to us. So therefore, I'm going to rule your motion out of order. On what Ms. Lugren just said, have to rule that out of order.
If I'm just going to make one point, and that is, we have done it before with Mike Fabro. I can recall, I believe, another instance as well. And it may have been that we asked the applicant if they would agree to it, and given this circumstance, can we try it that way? Can we ask the applicant if they would not object to us allowing a citizen to speak, given that the tiny window of filling out that form was during a state of emergency when everything else was being closed? And people's rent and foreclosures were being extended, and we haven't been able to extend our unique request for oral argument. Can we, can we try that?
Advocate. I don't think it's going to make any difference. The applicant can address that. Advocate?
With Hill Ward Henderson, I do not have authorization from my clients to waive their rights to due process at this hearing, so I'm unfortunately not able to consent to that at this time. I think that Ms. Fight's objections are in the record already. I think they're before you to consider her remarks at the zoning hearing master or in your agenda backup, and I do think that it would be problematic if you were to allow her to speak and then base your decision based on anything that she testifies into the record this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, I truly understand your concern. I really, really do. And I feel, I feel the issue that you're talking about. I really understand that. And I hope that, and I'll be gone in ninety-seven odd days, that maybe somewhere down the line, legal beagles can get together and work this out, that we won't have issues like this at all. But at this point, at this point, I still must rule your motion out of order. I do understand what you're saying. I really understand, but because of the legal aspect of it, I think that have to rule it out of order, and maybe there's some time down the road that you can, this board can get with our legal staff to see if there's something that can be worked out. But right now, the motion is out of order. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Sorry, I was just looking through some different documents here. You know, I just, I would like to emphasize, along with Commissioner Smith, that just, I think it's important, this is, to me, the due process issue is certainly with the, the person who's not, you know, being allowed to, to speak, the cumbersome, very unfair requirements, the, that we even, we discussed at our last land use meeting in terms of changing, and that this board voted not to, not to allow to change at this time. And it has, it has been such an, an barrier to our citizens, speaking to us. And it has been such an barrier to our citizens, speaking to us about what is profound and fundamental, where they live and how they live, and something that is such a responsibility for us to hear. And I'm just, first, I just am so deeply disappointed in the decision that was made the other evening or last month to continue this and to continue this incredibly inaccessible system for citizens. It's really shameful. We are the only county, as I know, that is using this, and it really hurts citizen participation, but also the rights of citizens to be part of the process, to make these cumbersome, ridiculous requirements when they already go out of their way to show up at the rezoning hearing. And then on top of it, pile on a pandemic, you know, I just, for us not to hear from Ms. Fight, I think, and for us not to consider something. I'd just like to ask our attorney, Ms. Lundgren. So is there any other way in terms of getting Ms. Fight's and other comments into the record today?
Commissioner, Ms. Fight's objections and concerns are in the record. They are in the zoning hearing master recommendation. She did speak at the zoning hearing master hearing, so you can refer to the-
So I can find it and read it into the record?
... recommendation of the zoning hearing master, her recommendations and her concerns about the project. So the board's certainly able to look at her, at Ms. Fight's concerns and their decision making today. The only reason, the only issue is she hasn't filed for oral argument, so she can't repeat those concerns now, but you can look to those in the record as you make your decision.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not concerned with the due process issues because clearly on Page 14 and 15 of our backup, Ms. Fight's concerns are shared. We simply have to follow the rules or have to, it has to be a level playing field for all sides. That being said, I am concerned about the project. I know there's a reduction in density and trips with the proposal, but I believe a three-story multifamily development negatively impacts and is incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. As Ms. Fight states on Page 14 and 15 of our backup, you know, the 2008 rezoning was supported in the past by the neighborhood because there were conditions that protected the neighborhood, such as buffers, a wall, and no vehicle traffic on 12th. And I'm concerned that over time, we have slowly eroded these conditions. So I'm not going to support the application. I do want to point out that although the neighborhood that's impacted is in Lutz and North Hillsborough, it's actually not even in my district, it's in District 3. But that being said, I do, I am going to oppose the project. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize? What's your pleasure? Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. I won't be supporting the project either, not only for the due process issues, but because of some of the things that Commissioner Hagan mentioned and some of the objections in the record by the community. They provided photographs of the local roads. 12th Street is just, has major problems on the side of this. There's substandard streets and design standards that are proposed that would leave the streets dangerous while adding more traffic to those streets. 12th Street, the photos the citizens provided show it is in poor shape, no shoulders, narrow lanes with a very steep ditch on one side, and the developer is proposing to leave it as substandard in width and provide only one sidewalk on one side. I don't see any bike lanes in that. The EPC mentioned that the site contains wetlands, and some citizens raised concern about wetlands and runoff onto their property. But the applicant rebuts the citizen concerns in the record that I read by saying there is no wetlands at all. And so that led to the zoning hearing master dismissing the concerns. And so I would have, you know, thought it would have been informative to have a full discussion from representatives of the neighborhood about those issues, but we do have the EPC report saying something different than what the applicant's word was on that. So I think there's a lot of reasons here to deny this, and I'll make that motion to deny.
There's a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp for denial. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've had a good discussion on this item, and I think that Commissioner Hagan's concerns are real. I do believe that, I think we should give the applicant the benefit of at least going back to their client and seeing if they can make and work with the neighborhood. We've done this so many times in the past where neighborhood objects, and I'd like to make a substitute motion to continue the item, to allow them to come back after they've had a chance to meet with the neighborhood and maybe work out some of these concerns. I do understand Commissioner Hagan's concerns were well-founded, so, but I think, as we've done before, you know, let's just give them a shot to make this a little more palatable for the neighborhood going forward. I'm making that-
We have a substitute motion by Commissioner Merman for continuance, second by Commissioner Overman to the substitute motion. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize? Mr. Commissioner, pardon, Commissioner Hagan?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, you recognize?
Well, I would like to know if the applicant is amenable to the continuance. That being said, I am torn because I do not believe the project as it stands is compatible. However, having been around for the previous applications on this property, I know that the neighborhood is or has been open for development. They just want to protect the integrity of their neighborhood. So I'm leaning towards supporting the continuance. However, I want to hear what the applicant has to say, but if it returns as is or anywhere near the way it's currently set up, I would want to again oppose it. Thank you.
Applicant, you want to address Commissioner Hagan's question?
Mr. Gormley, could you repeat the question?
You support the continuance.
We're just talking, we think that a remand might be more appropriate than a continuance to allow us the true opportunity to do what the commissioners are asking us to do, which is to work with the neighborhood and perhaps make changes. And so in order for us to be able to do that, we have to really remand and go back to the hearing officer. I mean, a continuance will put us kind of back in this same place where Ms. Fight maybe files her oral argument, and then we're making our same arguments because we're restricted to the record that was made before us. We would be amenable to a remand.
Commissioner Merman, you want to withdraw your substitute motion?
Yes, I'll withdraw the substitute, make a new substitute for a remand of the item.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a substitute motion to remand the item by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yes, I'll support this because a remand, among other things, will allow more full looking at what some of the community issues are, as the applicant stated, but it will also allow the, all of the citizens to file for oral argument and be able to be heard on this when it comes back. I want to make that clear to the citizens, that they will now have a fresh chance to proceed as, they're still parties of record, no matter whether they participate in the next step or not, but they will be able to file for oral argument and come make their case in front of us. So I'll be supporting the remand.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Oh, forgot to take my hand down, sorry.
Okay. I'm going to support the remand, but I was not going to support the issue I was going to vote for denial. I'm very familiar with this area, this is my district. Been out there many, many, many times. It was just not conducive, and I know what the citizens were saying out there, but I'm going to support the remand and hope that the citizens and this person, the applicant, can work these things out. However, if it comes back and it's still the same way, I'll probably be voting for denial. So we have a motion, a substitute motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Please call the roll on the substitute motion.
I'd like to announce the continuing, sorry, the remand date would be October 19th at 6:00 p.m.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Mr. Moreta?
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us up to the regular agenda, item G1, this is a plan development proposal number 19-1344. It's generally located south of Bloomingdale and southwest of Lithia Pinecrest Road. It's about specifically located 30 feet north of the intersection of Hideaway Lane and Loma Vista Drive. It's a 15-acre site. It's RSC 4 in the, it's 4 in the plan, and it's AS1 zoning. The AS1 zoning permits one home on a one-acre lot and also permits mobile homes. The request is to a plan development. The plan development proposes 10,000 square foot lots, 34, the number would be 34 lots. It's also located in the Brandon Plan, specifically the Garden District of the Brandon Plan. The site is designed as a loop road, which has access through Loma Vista Drive, and it also has access points on Hideaway Lane and Clavett Court, or excuse me, Olivet Court. Staff has recommended the design of the site and also compliance with compatibility in the area generally, and we are recommending approval with conditions.
I have a motion to open for oral argument.
So move.
Second by Commissioner White for oral argument. Senior Discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Applicant? Is the applicant here? You have 10 minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard, Tampa. Commissioners, I believe the staff report for this project, which includes recommendations of approval from Development Services and findings of consistency and compatibility, I do stress compatibility, from the planning commission does a thorough job of laying out the meat and potatoes of this request. What I'd like to spend just a moment on is focusing on the care and consideration that really went into getting to where we are right now with the plan that's in front of you. From the outset of this project, we were very aware of the unique positioning of the property, and it really is sort of in a gray area between the very high density north of Bloomingdale and then the very spacious lots to the south of this project. With that in mind, we're proposing just 34 10,000 square foot lots on the project's 15 acres for an overall density of 2.26 units per acre, which is obviously far below the land use of four units per acre, which could have allowed for 60 units, notwithstanding the overlay. We maintain that this density is more than appropriate, it's a transition between the tight rooftops along Bloomingdale and then the more sprawling homes into all of the hills. Further, and this is again all laid out in the staff report and the conditions, we've committed to enhanced buffering and screening for the project. We've got a six-foot PVC fence, 10-foot trees every 40 feet along the eastern and western boundaries, and a 10-foot landscape buffer and ponds along the southern boundary, which all in all amounts to a 100-foot building setup for the project. This is all above and beyond in terms of LDC requirements, which of course don't mandate any screening or buffering between like residential development. To that point, other than some design exceptions with regard to transportation, which involves us actually considering building a sidewalk, there's no other waivers or variances. And I just want to be clear that none of this enhanced buffering or screening is meant to isolate the project at all, but rather to respect and acknowledge the larger lots surrounding the project. It's worth noting for the record, again, the project leaves county water and sewer. It's well within the urban service area. And then finally, Commissioners, as you're probably aware by the record, this project has extensive and colorful history in terms of the attentions received from the concerned neighbors around the project and planning efforts they've made in the last year while this project's been contemplated. And I have the principal on the case, Mr. Bill Sullivan here to speak to the community outrage and the efforts he's made to try and make this a peaceful project. Thank you.
Good evening, I mean, good morning. William Sullivan, 1350 Orange Avenue, Suite 201, Winter Park, Florida 32789. We originally started with this project with a different rezoning application for 60 units. We met with the planning staff and the community leaders early on and felt that was the wrong approach. We withdrew that application, came back with a different application, which is PD, the one you're seeing today, for 34 units. One thing we are doing that is quite important is that we are creating pedestrian connectivity in this area that's never existed before. There's basically going to be a sidewalk from our community all the way out to Lithia Pinecrest Road, and it's going to be out to Lithia Pinecrest Road, and it will tie in. So the two Lithia Springs Elementary and Camino Elementary will have pedestrian access for the first time. Additionally, we have in it, we leave a small park where there is a potential tie-in for the county to tie into their existing property to the north of us. Presently, I don't know how many students, but there's students that live in Bloomingdale that go to Camino, and they use our property to go through it to get to their school. And so we've, you know, we want to leave that open so they can still be able to get to their school. Additionally, we are bringing sewer and water almost a mile away into the area, and this is, you know, an area that is close to the springs, and we don't want to disturb it. In fact, the wetland for the springs is 900 feet south of the existing Tivolo Hills community. We had two community, we had one community meeting, which was just with the Tivolo Hills people, then we had a standard community meeting with, you know, with notification to meet the land development code. We have, through the process of working with the neighbors, although it has not been always the easiest, we have instituted, to when we have our community meetings, we literally post those community meetings on, we record them and post them on YouTube immediately following, so that there is no contention of what we say or don't say at our meetings, and we want total transparency. We've, we're down to 34 units, and I'd like to reserve any extra time to for when the, you know, after the opposition speaks.
Okay, is that it from the applicant team? Is that it from the, how much time do we have left?
Stand by one second.
One second, okay, don't worry about it.
Sorry, technical.
Okay, we have one part of record to speak in opposition, Margaret Jamsky. Okay, we have one part of record to speak of opposition, Margaret Jamsky. Good morning, ma'am. You have 10 minutes?
Yes, sir, that's me, Margaret. I reside at 4406 Loma Vista Drive in Valrico, and I'm representing the Tavallo Hills Neighborhood Alliance. Just hearing the conversation about the citizens' participation has made it difficult for this meeting. When we got the letter staying, the format was changed. We'd be here. We have numerous neighborhood members that wanted to appear, but were told that there wouldn't be room for them to be in this building. So we're asking, and I guess this is a question for Attorney Lundgren, due to the situation with everything happening and that the concerns of these citizens, very passionate about it, Mr. Sullivan can attest to that. We've had meetings before. And is there any way that we could ask for a postponement until we can have the physical presence of our citizens here as is allowed, you know, in the county, that citizens can speak up? Now, they've deferred their time to me because of the situation, but they wanted to be present in the audience so that you could see. And we were told they could attend virtually, but over the past week trying to get that set up, it just didn't work out. So we were told they just couldn't attend. So we just feel like that's kind of puts a damper on our side because they're very passionate about this project, not stopping it, just trying to make some concessions with it. Say you, Attorney Lundgren, is that allowed? That we can postpone this until we have a physical presence here?
Ms. Lundgren, you want to answer that before I say something?
Mr. Chairman, if I'm recognized, I would say that the applicant would need to agree to any postponement or continuance. And at this point, the request for oral argument timeframe is also passed for the application, and Ms. Jamsky is the opponent, the only opponent who's signed up to participate on behalf of the neighborhood.
No, I understand that, but we've, we were told that a presence, a show of presence so that people here would be helpful to show. There's not just two or three people who are against it, not just certain neighbors, as was projected, but a large group of neighbors are against it. So that's the one to show with the numbers showing up. That's why we feel like we're not getting proper.
Ms. Jamsky, right now, we have to abide by the rules that are in place. You're the only opponent that has signed up. So that's therefore, we're going to have to continue with your being the only opponent that's signed up. You still have, I'm going to let you start from 10 minutes, and I would advise you to go ahead and do, say what you have to say in opposition to this particular item. And so therefore, we won't be postponing. We have to move forward. So your 10 minutes starts as soon as you start.
The emails that you all have received prior to this were the number of people who would probably would have shown up. So that would give you an idea. It would have been their red shirts, and you would have clearly seen them. So I hope that you take that consideration. Thank you, sir. In the very beginning of this request, and I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan, but you did not meet with us before he filed his first one. So that was a moot point. I think we should just throw that out. It was disapproved. So the fact that in his mind, he's going from 60 units, which he was allowed, down to 34 is not true. This is the application that went forward for 34 homes. From the very beginning, all we have ever asked is, number one, half-acre parcels to coincide with the Brandon Community Plan and protecting our garden estates. And number two, a natural tree line that would coincide with the already longstanding and well-developed and surrounding acres near this parcel. The next thing, we've, after several meetings with Mr. Sullivan, we realize now that it would be much better for everyone if he would file a PD-specific. Now, if you can see the difference, the PD, which he is filing, used for unified, large-scale, mixed-use development, which this is not, but a PD-specific would help ensure compatibility and harmony with the surrounding areas. That's all we're asking for. So we asked that she would consider that also. And we know that we're having a very good plan at Hillsborough County. It's obvious. We've got a growing community. But as stated in section one of the FLU element, because of the transitional nature of suburbs, there tend to be more conflicts. We tend to be that conflict, and we hope that we can come to an amicable solution by using the objective in the same element that says that they provide flexible alternative solutions to the problems. This is our neighborhood. You can clearly see it's the circle here. This is our neighborhood. These are the areas that have encroached upon it because, just because the plan wasn't followed as it should have been. There should have been larger acreage on the outside and then reduced down to a small one like the plan says. In 2019, we came to this very board in hopes to show how we were a forgotten neighborhood. Sorry, this thing is driving me nuts. Established long before the land development code and the future land policies were even drawn up, you all voted unanimously to allow our neighborhood to be fully established as a future land use designator two instead of the previous floor. We show how that affected our neighborhood in the past by these places here coming in around over here, and that we would like to protect our future. Well, now the future is here, and we're asking you to abide by the very plan the board members before you voted in to protect its citizens from overdevelopment. Of course, we'd love to leave one acre parcels with unimproved roads. However, because we are now in the urban service area, we understand there's going to be changes. Many policies and objectives point to a smooth transition from suburban to rural. This is a unique situation, and that transition did not happen as smoothly as it should have, and we would like to work with you as the administrators and the developer to become to common ground. We understand this property is to be developed. We're not wanting to be an impediment to that development. We only want to maintain the character and integrity of our neighborhood that surrounds it. And we're hoping to illuminate some of the points that are in the reviewers' reports that favor the developer, but in all, all actuality indicate favor to our position. And I'll present those in these next couple of slides. We just hope that you see our point of view with their policies and render a just decision. As it stands now, the Brandon Community Plan and Hillsborough Comp Plan appear to have some conflicts, but also clearly states, when those conflicts arise, more restrictive community plan will apply. I just want to reiterate, will apply. These two policies, right, well, the policy 18 talks about those specific policies will apply in guiding the development community, and also the land development code. The more restrictive requirements shall prevail. Will apply and shall prevail are terms that are irrefutable. We don't understand how the reviewers can recommend an approval based on those very policies standing on their own. We'd like to address some of the summaries that were prepared. First of all, Mr. Beechey's speaking to connectivity. This planned entrance, this is, here's the property in question, okay? Mr. White of the Transportation Department talked to you about connectivity. He said this meant for transition. This is not a transitional connection here, not like on Gorton Road or Providence Lake in Brandon. They actually help people transition through the neighborhoods. Three full accesses to a 15-acre parcel is unnecessary when our 113 acres or parcels have one entrance right here. That's it, that yellow line. And we, we understand that the board, the commissioners can waive these entrances. So we're asking waive it down to just two. If he has to have connectivity, connectivity, just make it two entrances. That will give him a larger lotside than we're asking for and kind of help the situation render itself out. Now, we have a big map over here because we feel that it shows, actually, this one shows pretty good, but you guys can see that, that larger map, yeah. Okay.
Excuse me, um, excuse me, Ms. Jamsky, is that a part of the record?
Yes.
The map that, was it shown at the zoning hearing?
Yes, yes.
Because I didn't see it.
Along with my easel man there.
Thank you.
The reason we have this big map, because it does show a very good view of what we're looking at here. Now, we know that Septic and Well is a moot point. We're not even going to attach it anymore. But we'd like to bring your attention to property in the northeast corner of this parcel. There is a possibility of bringing sewer and water through that area itself. This is a county area right here. The problem is the county can't establish proper ownership. And following is an email that has been a string of emails talking about that being utilized. If you'll note in the highlighted section, the yellow one, it said, "We would however be open if the property was determined to be ours," the county's, "to a directional bore under the forest through the line if some concessions were made." So it's a possibility. And I just want to point out, and this is just kind of off the record, but well, it's not, it's not off the record, but it's not pertaining to this. The part in blue where it talks about parks and recreation not supporting an open trail leading behind people's homes, there is a trail that was proposed right here. Let me see if I can see that. That at one time, Mr. Sullivan was trying to be very open about having an open horse trail for us, because we're a horseback riding community, to get to what he thought was a community park. This is not a community park. Not that it couldn't be, I guess, but that's what that little area was for. And Mr. Cashin said it was a driveway extension. I don't think Mr. Cashin was aware of what the original intent was. Mr. Sullivan was talking to us about having an open area to get our horses back into the park, but there's no park there, so it doesn't really matter. So we just want to make that sure that if the county could solidify that property ownership, that would be a great way for his sewer and water, and it would take care of him how to put a sidewalk in our neighborhood, which we don't really want anyway, and probably save him some time and money to boot. Now, because the school board was mentioned, I'm just only going to bring it up. Mr. Beechey's report talked about that. It's Chino Elementary. It's going to bring in unintended traffic to this neighborhood that has caused quite a safety concern, as you can see by these pictures. This is a woman who got special permission to allow her kids to go to Chino that live in our neighborhood. She backs up to it. But our neighborhood is not zoned for that school. We only get all the traffic for the drop-off and pickups from the parents. They come in through what was supposed to be a maintenance entrance only. Now, when that neighborhood goes in, Joe can show you, that is going to be right in front of that, they all line up around that road, right there where that entrance is supposed to be. That could also be a problem for everybody down the road. And then, of course, there's, people have, when they're riding their horses with that traffic in and out, you have to, you can't, you have to dismount, you can't even ride with them, because they don't really know how to drive in an area where horses are allowed. So that's another issue we have. That, we were going to talk about the flooding at the entrance to our neighborhood, but we're going to leave that out. That's, y'all are going to hear about that if they move in there anyway, so we'll wait till later. Now, the garden estates, this is a definition from the garden, the Brandon Community Plan. Lot sizes of at least a half acre. Agricultural zoning included related horse and farm animal ownership. We do have horses and farm animals there, and giving the feel of a semi-rural lifestyle, all right? That is what the garden plan says. The comp plan uses the feature land use as a tool and a guide to aid the developers. And it's supposed to be used to develop undeveloped or areas in need of refurbishment, not as a rule to aid developers when they want to change the character integrity of a long-existing neighborhood. We want to point out that the 4,500 square foot lots are five properties to the northeast, northeast of that parcel, and are not accessible from that parcel in question. These are properties the developer uses as a comparison to his design, not the larger surrounding acreage. There's county-owned acres to the northeast of eight acres, and then the three surrounding sides are another 348,000 square foot lots. How can that be a comparison? His lots are only a quarter of an acre, if that.
Ma'am.
Next, we talked about compatibility.
Ma'am, you're allotted 10 minutes to where your presentation, your 10 minutes are up. Your 10 minutes are up, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Fine. That's it.
Pardon me?
And so you said, I just went 10? I'm not understanding what he's saying. It's kind of garbled.
You have, you, and you're allotted.
10 minutes afforded to the opponents on oral argument and.
We're there, we're there. Okay. Well, like I said, standalone. Thank you. I also have a copy.
Ma'am, ma'am, your 10 minutes are up. Applicant, five minutes rebuttal?
Commissioners, William Malloy again. I want to stress as much as I can, when you're looking at the aerials that the opposition presented, that I believe our project with 10,000 square foot lots, that's effectively a quarter acre lot in the heart of Brandon, that close to Bloomingdale, we believe is a, not a massive concession, but it's a very effective transition and a good planned, a well-planned project. The size of those lots for what they could be are, I think they're extraordinary. And we did that trying to keep a balance between what good development is and what the Brandon overlay district said. With that, I know that our planner on the case, Mr. Cashin, has a few notes for you to that end. But I want to stress that we believe that, and we plan that to be a transitionary area, hence the very large lots in a very urban environment. Thank you.
Good morning. Sean Cashin, 13825 ICA Boulevard, Clearwater, Florida. I have not been sworn.
Please swear, ma'am.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. A couple of points I'd like to make are that, and then Ms. Jamsky also had referenced a natural tree line around the perimeter of this, of this site. What we are proposing along the east and the west are 30-foot rear setbacks in lieu of the typical 20-foot rear setback. That, in addition to what Mr. Malloy said, we are going to, we are proposing 10-foot wide landscape buffers with three-inch caliper trees every 40 feet, and that will also be along the east and the west. In addition, we are proposing to the south, 100-foot building setback buffers. On the site plan, we do have retention areas that are proposed on the south, but in addition to that, there will be a building setback of 100 feet. In addition, there will also be a 10-foot landscape buffer along the southern boundary. So with these increased setbacks and landscape buffers, we are trying to create a nice buffer, tree line buffer from the adjacent community. Regarding the proposed layout and the interconnectivity with the roadways, Olivet Court to the east as well as Hideaway Lane to the west, right now, they are dead-end roads. What we are proposing as part of our plan is to interconnect those two roadways through our proposed development. This will increase traffic efficiency, be better traffic circulation, as well as what I want to stress is it will be much better for emergency vehicles, whereas right now there's a dead-end road. They have, it does not meet the NFPA criteria for emergency vehicles. There's not a backup area. So this will also be much improved and better for emergency vehicle access to the site, that in addition to the southern access, the main access to Hideaway Lane to the south. And, and also what has been mentioned previously is in addition to the interconnectivity with the roadways, Mr. Sullivan had mentioned that we are proposing a 3,200 lane foot sidewalk extension from the property off to the east, and that will connect into Lithia Pinecrest. There are no sidewalks out in the neighborhood right now, so this will provide for better pedestrian access. And in addition, at great cost, we are going to be extending about a mile, a little bit less than a mile, of water and sewer facilities, also from Lithia Pinecrest to this development. The water will be available for adjacent lots to connect into. The sewer, there's some issues with individual lots connected into the sewer, but the water will be available for lots that are adjacent to the property or along the water main extension route to connect into that water. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Planning Commission staff?
Yes, thank you. This other property is located within the residential for future land use category. It is in the urban service area and also within the limits of the Brandon Community Plan. Per future land use policy 1.2 of the future land use element, land within the urban services area are to be developed at a minimum of 75% of the allowable density with each land use classification. The site does not meet the minimum density threshold, which would be 45 units. However, the site does meet the exception to minimum density, the development that would adversely impact with the existing development pattern within house radius. This is consistent. divides the Brandon area into character districts. The site is within the Garden Estates District where lot sizes are described at least a half an acre or around 22,000 square feet in size. The applicant is proposing 10,000 square foot lots. The lot sizes in the immediate area range from 5,000 square feet to over four acres in size. Comprehensive plan policies encourage a diversity of lot sizes. The definition of compatibility indicates it does not mean the same as, rather refers to the sensitivity of development proposals and maintaining the existing character of the neighborhood. The applicant is providing adequate buffering and screening to remain sensitive to the development pattern in the area, consistent with policy 1.4 of the future land use element. The Community Plan's vision also states that Brandon is a vibrant community of diverse neighborhoods. While this area is described as an area with predominantly half-acre lots, this does not preclude smaller lots from being developed within the Garden Estates District. The Community Plan also encourages the protection of established neighborhoods and historic patterns of development. With the mitigation of buffering and screening, as well as providing larger lots than what would typically be considered within the residential four future land use category, the applicant is meeting the intent of the Brandon Community Plan by protecting the established development pattern, and additionally, the conditions that are in place also adequately mitigate the surrounding uses. Vehicular connections to the east and west are proposed, which is consistent with connectivity policies within the future land use element. These policies state that neighborhoods shall be designed to include an efficient system of internal circulation and street stubouts to connect adjacent neighborhoods together. Taking into consideration the site's location within the urban service area and the Brandon Community Plan's vision, the request for residential units in this location would integrate well with the established development pattern and is supported by policy direction. Based upon those considerations, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed plan development consistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, subject to the conditions proposed by developments.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Resoning here, Ambassador.
Considered the subject plan development, which proposes 34 single-family dwelling units with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, minimum lot width of 75 feet. This results in approximately 34 units on approximately 2.26 units per acre. As you heard, area residents of the Tavalo Hills subdivision appeared in opposition with the primary concern being compatibility of lot sizes. The Tavalo Hills area consists of AS1 zoning, and while that portion of Tavalo Hills generally west of the subject property boundaries, eastern property line previously had a future land use of RES4, a recent plan amendment with an effective date of February 15, 2020, changed the future land use excluding the subject property to RES2. The subject rezoning request was filed prior to the effective date of the plan amendment, and in any case, the subject property has a future land use of RES4. The zoning hearing master found that the applicant has proposed several design measures to mitigate potential impacts along the transitions between Tavalo Hills and the proposed PD. The zoning hearing master found that this proposed subdivision strikes an appropriate balance in terms of the number of units and minimum lot sizes. The zoning hearing master of overall, excuse me, the zoning hearing master found that overall the approval of this plan development will result in development that is compatible with the surrounding area and recommended approval.
Thank you. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two questions of the applicant.
Applicant.
I'm trying to think of ways that we might be able to get you to a place where you have better compatibility with the Garden Estates District provision and the Brandon Community Plan. I do know that there's a county-owned parcel, I believe it's directly adjacent to your project. Could that property potentially be helpful for you in terms of, you know, swapping land, you know, using it for connectivity or other uses, but in exchange for, let's say, a park or some amenity of the same size elsewhere on the project site? And if so, have you engaged county staff about bringing that into the mix?
So just so I understand correctly, we're speaking of the park to the northeast? Is that the piece of question?
I don't believe it's a park. I believe, I believe there's a county-owned piece of vacant land in your vicinity, and if I'm mistaken, then we can just remove that piece from discussion, but I thought there's a county-owned piece of land in your vicinity that's vacant land.
To the northeast, there's a county-owned piece of property. We did engage in what I would say preliminary introductory conversations with staff at fairly high levels, actually, about possibly bringing that into the project as a park that we would develop and then deed over to the county or maintain ourselves or deed and maintain. The problem with that was that while the county does appear to own the property, no department within the county has been able to assume that it is their responsibility or their right to allow us to do that. The last that we left it, I believe, was a written statement saying the cloud on the title to that property still existed, and no one actually had the authority to bring it into our project. We would have been more than happy to bring it in, but at this point, the time to do that has come and gone. The county still is unresolved as to who has responsibility for that piece of dirt.
Understood. And then, secondly, would any sort of relief from any of those connectivity provisions help you to get to a place where you can have a larger lotting pattern and better compatibility with that Brandon Community Plan?
In other words, if we closed a connection point, could we enlarge the lot size?
For example, yes.
Well, I mean, I believe overall, the answer would have to be mathematically yes. I'm not sure that it would have a substantial impact on the size of the lots overall. I think Mr. Sullivan's going to speak to that. He's grouping up here.
I'd like to speak to that. The connection points are 50 feet wide. There's only three total connection points. There's, mathematically, it really makes no, we could pick up, we could widen the lots to maybe another foot, two feet. It's not going to make a big difference when you spread it around 30 some odd lots. It's not going to make a difference at all.
Okay. So now I want to ask county staff, is there anything that I can incorporate into a motion to try to get the applicant in front of the proper staff member on county staff to talk about that piece of property nearby, adjacent, frankly, as a way to maybe somehow see if it could be incorporated into this and somehow, you know, allow them to get to a place where they have better compatibility with the, with the community plan? And we could potentially even end up with a park amenity out of it in the end.
Commissioner, my understanding is that there's still, that there's a question on the title and proper ownership of that property. However, if that's the will here, we could certainly engage with real estate and try to identify the best method to clean that up and how it could potentially be incorporated into the project.
So my question is, is that best managed through a motion to continue or a motion to remand? What's your recommendation?
If it were a, if it were to be continued, we would be left with the same site plan and configuration that we have today. In my view, this would be a significant enough change to what's proposed, that it would be best and most appropriately dealt with through a remand to see if the plan could change and more land could be incorporated into the project. Otherwise, it would be compared in the site plan that we have today without the connection or that county land being in play for the application.
And if there's a remand, does that, does that offer a reboot for the citizens to get in front of the board and speak to us, provided that they go through the new zoning hearing master process and everything?
If the application were remanded back to the zoning hearing master, it would open another opportunity for oral argument to be filed for people who have not yet filed, if they so choose.
Okay. I'm going to move to remand with the purpose of bringing applicable county staff to the table to talk about how, if at all, that county-owned parcel could come into play and ultimately help the applicant and the community get to a place to where we have better compatibility with the Brandon Community Plan, specifically the Garden Estates District.
Second, second, this is Commissioner Camp.
This is motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp to remand item G1. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I thought those were very good points that both the speaker made and Commissioner White about opportunities. It certainly looks, from looking at the map, that this is one of the last opportunities we have in that area with that county land with clouded title. One of the things I'd like to ask is, just a very good point to start to look at that, but to our staff, with the clouded title, have, I mean, how long will it take to clear that?
We have that answer available. I think, you know, it's just discussing with the applicant if it's the board's direction, trying to identify that. It will become a prioritized effort that we'll be involved with and resolving. I can't give you an answer at this time of how long that would take.
Okay. I just wanted to have something else. The other thing that I remember from this area before, when the community came before, and what I heard alluded to just a little, was the connectivity to Chimeno Elementary or maybe the school assignments, which it sounded like that those in this neighborhood, it would make sense because they're right next door. So I'm not sure how that's working with the school assignments or connectivity, but I remember in the past that that was some kind of issue, and it seemed like on the list of concerns that Commissioner White talked about and the speaker talked about, that perhaps that could just be listed in the record. I don't understand what the issues are, but perhaps it's something that could be looked at as well.
Certainly, Commissioners, the school board comments reflect that Lithia Springs, rather than Chimeno, is the assigned elementary school for this neighborhood.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. I'll support the remand. The one thing I would urge caution on is reducing the connectivity and eliminating some of the access points to this parcel through the neighborhood. I mean, it's the age-old fight we are often confronted with, where the neighborhood doesn't want roads going through it or something, but this board has indicated time and again a support of connecting the grid, and I would just urge the neighborhood, be careful what you wish for. I think in the long run, and I would like to, I would like to see that connectivity remain intact when it comes back. So I wouldn't take this as, for the developer to, I just want them to understand that that was a point raised that I would like to see remain in the plan.
Okay. We have a motion to remand, motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing a further discussion, please call the roll.
And date will be October 19th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Ms. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item G2. This is the rezoning of plan development, specifically number 19-0935. Property is approximately 193 acres. Current zoning is AR, which permits one unit per five acre. It's located in the Wyomama South Shore Community Plan. This PD is specifically to implement WVR2. Proposal entails 387 single-family lots and also has residential support uses on a 2.2-acre site that's going to propose to include daycare and churches and things that would fit in within the definition of residential support. Michelle Heinrich of our staff is going to walk you through. Our staff found this not supportable due to lack of compliance with the comprehensive plan, specifically the Wyomama Village requirements pertaining to jobs.
I'm going to have Michelle to walk you through the graphics. Thank you, Michelle.
Sure. Good morning, Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. As Ms. Moreta stated, this is a rezoning for approximately 193 acres from AR to PD, and that is to allow for a development of 387 single-family lots with residential support uses. As stated, the site is located in the Wyomama community, and it is in the WVR2 future land use category. And as you know, this potentially permits a maximum of two units per acre, subject to comprehensive plan and community plan goals and policies. Also, the property is located in the rural service area. Projects developed with two units per acre, otherwise known as a Wyomama Village, are to feature various characteristics. That includes open space, clustering of residential lots, a mixture of uses, a connected transportation network, and diverse housing for the area that is not isolated. And lastly, jobs and commercial uses within the Wyomama area to support the proposed residential. Staff's review from the project is demonstrating compliance with all village features, with the exception of the presence of jobs and commercial uses as evaluated by Planning Commission staff. Therefore, we do not recommend approval of this application, and also note that County Route 579 is a substandard road, and a design exception has been found to be approvable by the county engineer. Thank you.
I have a motion for oral argument.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Merman. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Oben, open for oral arguments. Seeing a discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Applicant, you here? Have you been sworn in?
Good morning. I have not been sworn in yet.
Please swear, applicant.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You have 10 minutes, ma'am.
McCormick 3314 Henderson Boulevard, representing the applicant. We have our team, Isabel Albert with half and associate, Steve Henry with links and associates, Clark Lowmiller of our department, and Steve Luce, Director Eisenhower Property Group. I'm going to have Isabel Albert talk about the site plan, and then following that, I'm going to address policy 48.1 of the future land use element, which references jobs and services within the WVR2 future land use category.
Good morning, Commissioners. Isabel Albert with half associates assisting the applicant with the rezoning request for the site located in the Wyomama Plan Village. It has a future land use designation of WVR2. It's approximately 194 acres. This land use category does permit two units to the acre as long as there's a clustering requirement, and with that, we're proposing 387 single-family units, 2.2 acres of residential support use, as well as 83 acres. our department, and Steve Luce, Director Eisenhower Property Group. I'm going to have Isabel Albert talk about the site plan and then following that, I'm going to address policy 48.1 of the future land use element, which references jobs and services within the WVR2 future land use category.
Good morning Commissioners, Isabel Albert with half associates assisting the applicant with the rezoning request for the site located in the Wyomama Village. Uh, it has a future land use designation of WVR2. It's approximately 194 acres. Uh, this land use category does permit two units to the acre as long as there's a clustering requirement. And with that, we're proposing 387 single family units, 2.2 acres of residential support use, as well as 83.42 acres of open space. The site is located just south of the Wyomama Village, uh, to the north. To the east, there's, um, public land. To the west is residential development and to the south is the plan development with similar development standard as what we're proposing today. The Wyomama Community Plan as well as WVR2 has these requirements for clustering as long as there's 3.5 dwelling units to the acres on 10 acres, we can have two units to the acres. Minimum requirement of 40% continuous open space is being provided as well as a mixed use provision which is located internally to the development and cross access to surrounding properties, uh, along the property line of the plan development, including to the, uh, west, uh, which is the CSX railroad line, which hopefully will be turned into a multi, um, trail, um, system, as well as, um, requirement to have, uh, public water and sewer which will be provided by the developer. So this brings us to the last requirement of employment services. Uh, we have a different interpretation than what planning commission staff, um, had about over a year ago, and it's further enforced, uh, in light of the recent studies that were done in the area. And fortunately, planning commission, when they did the recommendation, did not have access to that study. But that being said, um, the, it's, uh, the history of this site of the Wyomama Village, our Wyomama Future Land Use, uh, designation is that it used to be RP2 residential plan, uh, development and required the commercial to be located within, um, internal to the project. Being in the Wyomama Community area, um, the residents, um, and, um, uh, development, the residents in the area were in, um, trying to revitalize the commercial, um, corridor which is located on 674. And then with the RP2, which was going against what their, um, project of revitalization, therefore they created the WVR2, which is to encourage if any developments being proposed to be located along this existing corridor, commercial corridor of 670, uh, 674, sorry. And so with that, they had to do some kind of tracking to see what was happening with all these planned developments coming in. And that's where it comes into saying with the, the number of rooftops that would come in, they would look at, see how much job holders possibly can those residents, um, in those developments bring, as well as what kind of demand and services will that create with the new rooftops coming in. And the tracking mechanism is done from plan development to plan development as shown here, and then there's a total. So it's basically keeping track of future, um, future services and growth in the area. So my Wyomama Village Plan, all these policies are being met, the WVR2, park, recreation, conservation, economic development, transportation, and housing in neighborhood. And lastly, also the Wyomama Village Plan land use category. Um, we meet the rose, the residential growth densities with the clustering, um, that we're providing as well as the open space requirement, the employment services as I described to you today, as well as sprawl prevention, utilities, and the approval and tracking that I, um, explained. With that, um, I will bring this back to Ms. Erin. Thank you.
So as you've heard, um, the only reason that the planning commission staff found that this, uh, project to be not supportable was policy 48.1. As you know, on August 13th, 2019, a motion was made and in a split decision, the board voted to approve the planning commission staff's interpretation of policy 48.1. The planning commission staff's interpretation required, is that a rezoning may not be approved if jobs and services are not available at the time of the rezoning. And moreover, according to staff, those jobs and services that are available are allocated to rezonings on a first come, first served basis. This interpretation was rejected by the zoning hearing master, um, and in his report, he indicated that, um, a requirement that employment and services criteria must be in, in existence to support a new residential PD development approval does not exist within the comprehensive plan and was not intended by the text of the plan. He goes on to say that no analysis has been provided to support any interpretation of 48.1 that would substantiate that the employment and services must exist prior to zoning approval within the WVR2. So in addition to the competent and substantial evidence on this issue, there are important substantial policy reasons why the county should support a residential rezoning within WVR2 that meets all of the requirements for open space, clustering, public utilities, and connectivity. And we'd like to ask the board at this time to consider a new, the interpretation of policy 48.1. Um, to speak to some of those policy issues. Okay. The allowable density of two dwelling units per acre in a clustered manner so that open space can be preserved will support the development of a vibrant Wyomama downtown as sought by the community at the time that the community plan was developed. And specifically in this case, the subject parcel is the closest parcel available for development in the immediate vicinity of the contemplated downtown Wyomama and Main Street. The CSX now Tico Corridor, 100 feet, is immediately adjacent to the western boundary of our property and it extends all along the western boundary. This makes it extraordinarily situated, the parcel is extraordinarily situated with the potential for a bike and pedestrian corridor that could provide easy access to the Main Street Wyomama. As you can see, there are two residential projects that have been recently approved for residential development in the WVR2 category. Our project in relation to those rezonings is essentially info in that it's closer to the Wyomama downtown area. Arbitrarily tying jobs and services to the timing of when a rezoning is filed and then allocating existing jobs on a first come, first served basis to those rezoning applications is counterproductive from a policy standpoint. The timing of actual development is not always correspond to rezoning approval. As Isabel indicated, it's widely acknowledged in land use planning that commercial development follows residential population growth. But in this case, from the standpoint of monitoring jobs and services growth, it would be a much better policy to track that growth at the time that a builder or developer is actually going in to seek preliminary site plan or plot approval when the actual development is ready to proceed. For all of those reasons, we respectfully ask that you approve this rezoning. And I'd like to reserve any additional time for rebuttal of any additional presentation by staff.
Okay, thank you. We have no party of record in opposition or in, uh, support. Uh, so ma'am, um, there's nothing ready to rebuttal because we have no opposition, no what, no party of record. Uh, so we're gonna go. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this is the clerk. Could the applicant representatives please identify themselves? We didn't get that on the record.
Who identify themselves?
Yes, please. Uh, the two applicant representatives that just spoke.
Uh, both applicants, can you come forth and state your name, please? Ma'am?
My name is Erin McCormick and my address is 3314 Henderson Boulevard, Suite 103, Tampa.
And who was the other person? That, may they come forth, please?
Isabel Albert with half associates, 1000 North Ashley Drive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
As I stated, there is no, uh, proponent or opponent, uh, a party of record to speak on this. So we're now moving to, uh, planning commission staff.
Thank you Melissa Leinhardt, planning commission staff. The subject property is located within the Wyomama Village Residential 2 Future Land Use category. The site is located in the rural area and within the limits of the Wyomama Community Plan as well as the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. For policy 48, inside 48.1 of the future land use element, employment and service requirements shall be met to achieve densities in excess of one dwelling unit for five gross acres. After several meetings with the applicant and development services, um, development services staff, planning commission staff continues to evaluate these requirements as interpreted during, uh, previous WVR2 rezoning applications. The employment and service requirement numbers formulated using the square footage of existing non-residential from the entire community plan boundary, not solely the square footage located within the WVR2 Future Land Use category. In 2009, planning commission staff found rezoning 08 dash 0306 consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. The application requested a plan development allowing for 1,088 dwelling units and associated residential support and recreational uses. The staff report for this rezoning case stated that the development within the Wyomama Village Residential 2 Future Land Use category must also provide for employment and commercial uses to serve the residential communities that are created. It is the desire of the Wyomama Community for Wyomama's downtown to serve as the employment and commercial generator for much of the new residential development in this future land use category. At the time of rezoning 08306 was reviewed, there was sufficient non-residential development within the downtown area of Wyomama to support the addition of the proposed units in the proposed project. This rezoning was ultimately withdrawn. Since 2009, several plan developments have been approved. PD 10 dash 0147, which was also modified under 19 dash 0093, and PD 18 dash 1048 accounted for approximately 1,427 jobs from the industrial, west end, and downtown districts of the Wyomama Community Plan. The remaining 270 jobs located in those three districts accommodated a portion of the jobs that were required for the plan development application 19 dash 0102. This policy, 48.1 of the future land use element states that in order to achieve densities in excess of one dwelling unit for five gross acres in the WVR2 Future Land Use category, developments shall achieve the minimum clustering ratios, job opportunity provisions, and shopping provisions. Based upon analysis and research, as well as adopted comprehensive plan language, the planning commission staff has made a determination that the non-residential entitlements need to be present to move forward with rezonings to a density of two dwelling units for gross acre. At the Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting held on August 13th, 2019, the Board of County Commissioners moved to adopt the interpretation of the planning commission as it relates to the employment and service requirements as contemplated by both the Wyomama Village Residential 2 Future Land Use category, as well as the Wyomama Village Community Plan. The applicant completed an analysis to identify non-residential entitlements located within the future land boundary. In order to comply with the employing requirements of WVR2, a total of 319 jobs would be needed to accommodate the 387 proposed dwelling units. The previous rezoning cases that I mentioned have utilized all the available jobs within the Wyomama Community Plan boundary. Overall, the proposed rezoning would allow for development that is compatible with the existing and planned development pattern found in the surrounding area and also meets the intent of the Wyomama Community Plan and the future land use element policies with regard to residential development. The applicant, the application has addressed some of the WVR2 requirements such as open space. However, the application does not meet the full intent of the goals and strategies of the WVR2 Future Land Use category requirements due to the lack of employment and services available within the Wyomama Village Community Plan limits. And based upon those considerations, planning commission staff finds the proposed plan development inconsistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Zoning Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's requested rezoning to a plan development to accommodate 387 single family units developed with, uh, 4,400 square foot, approximately 40 foot wide, um, and 500, 5,550 foot wide lots, which would together result in a gross density of two units per acre and a net density of 3.5 units per acre. The application additionally proposes residential support uses on a minimum 2.2 acre tract. Zoning Hearing Master considered the planning commission report and recommendation for this application, which as you heard from the planning commission staff, um, has determined that the Wyomama Village Residential 2 category requires employment and services to exist to support new residential development. That's policy 48.1 of the plan. Zoning Hearing Master differed in considering this interpretation and found that such language does not exist within the conference of plan and was not intended by the text of the plan. Zoning Hearing Master stated that nonetheless, the planning commission interpretation results in a determination of inconsistency with the conference of plan that also results in the development services department not supporting the application. Zoning Hearing Master stated that it should be noted that but for this interpretation, the agency reports are supportive of the request. Zoning Hearing Master stated that no analysis has been provided to support any interpretation of policy 48.1 of the plan that would substantiate that the employment and services must exist prior to zoning approval within the WVR2. Zoning Hearing Master stated that the plain language of the Wyomama Village Plan and WVR2 direct the location of the development, but not its timing. Zoning Hearing Master concluded that overall, the proposed rezoning would allow for development that is compatible with the existing and planned development pattern found in the surrounding area and consistent with the conference of plan. The zoning hearing master therefore recommended approval of the plan development.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. Um, this is a request to multiply the density by 10 times outside the urban service area boundary. The WVR2, uh, designation and the Wyomama Community Plan gives very specific, uh, criteria for allowing that. Otherwise, people can, um, develop their land according to the rural, uh, designation that that is. Uh, there, I'm gonna start with, um, some of the many reasons to deny this, and one is transportation. I mean, this will undoubtedly make traffic worse in South County. The proposed rezoning is anticipated to increase traffic with 3,507 additional daily trips for a total of 3,866, 3,866 daily trips. The main entrance would be on County Route 579, a substandard rural road with no bike lanes, no sidewalks, not even any paved shoulders. And the design exceptions proposed, which we would be approving if we approved this, uh, is, uh, unpaved shoulders of six feet instead of the standard eight feet, 10 foot wide lanes instead of the standard 12 foot, and, uh, one multi-use path, uh, on one side of the road instead of the standard sidewalks and bike lanes on both sides of the road, all while adding thousands of cars. This would be especially dangerous in an area where many people use bicycles for transportation because many cannot afford a car for each person in the household. And with the narrow lanes and the no bike lanes and the no shoulders, you end up without, uh, the room for the requisite three foot, uh, separation even for a car to pass a bike lane while adding thousands of trips per day. Um, so this is, you know, this is how we remain among the most dangerous places in America for bicycles and pedestrians. We keep putting more roads on, more cars on substandard roads while allowing the roads to remain substandard. The, um, getting to the comp plan issue of the Wyomama Village Plan, uh, the Wyomama Village Plan requires residential, uh, to grow with jobs in this area specifically. I was involved in the community meetings when this plan was written, so I can tell you what was intended, uh, possibly, probably better. you what was intended, possibly, probably better than the zoning hearing master can guess. The point was so growth can become a part of the Wyomama community instead of just adding commuter subdivisions outside of downtown Wyomama that would, that would then be pouring traffic onto South County roads every day at rush hour, driving long distances to jobs in Tampa. They, the point was to have, have growth occur at the same time, supporting business in the Wyomama Village Town Center. But for this many houses, this fast, at this time, you'd need three hundred and nineteen jobs to support this development. The applicant is trying to relitigate this point, and, and the zoning hearing master is not only wrong in his interpretation of the Comprehensive Plan, he is out of his purview. He had argued this in a previous case, the, the Planning Commission provided their interpretation all the way up to the Director of the Planning Commission, and then we settled it. The Board of County Commissioners settled this point as, as a higher court, the, the higher authority. It's our Comprehensive Plan. And so when we ruled that we interpret this the way the, the Planning Commission does, the way I can tell you, the, the Wyomama community meant, there, there is no, no grounds for the zoning hearing master to be continuing to misinterpret this once it's already been settled. He does not have the authority, he's not an attorney, he's not a planner, he's just out there restating the case that we've already settled. So the point is to prevent sprawl outside the urban service area, stop making traffic worse in South County, and, and by allowing developers to create more and more subdivisions full of commuters. And so with that, I'll move denial.
There's a motion for denial by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Standing for discussion, Commissioner Hagan, do you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know the board voted four to three last year regarding the employment issue that the Planning Commission and Development Services focused on as a basis for not supporting the application, but I cannot ignore the ZHM's comments that Ms. Lundgren referenced, specifically the part about the employment language does not exist within the comp plan, not intended by the text of the plan, and that no analysis has been provided to support any interpretation of policy forty-eight point one that would substantiate that the employment and services must exist prior to voting approval within the WVR two. The board, in my opinion, the board is essentially holding developers hostage to commercial development on someone else's property. I do agree with Commissioner Smith that the applicant wants to relitigate, but I'm concerned it's going to be in our, in our court system, not in front of us. So not surprisingly, I'm not going to support the motion for denial.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I can't even believe that we have to keep discussing this. As, as Commissioner Smith pointed out, it was not in the zoning hearing master's purview or jurisdiction of any sort to, the, the board's judgment is final in this. And I would say, as the only lawyer on the board, I do think there is absolutely substantial and competent evidence to back up all of this. As Development Services has decided it's not supported, this, the Planning Commission says it's inconsistent with the plan. And the plan, since it seems to have to be restated, the Comprehensive Plan does not require us to increase densities in planned villages just because it's requested. This is from page one of our Comprehensive Plan. Planned villages are self-supporting communities that plan for a balanced mix of land uses, including residential, commercial, employment, and the supporting services, such as schools, libraries, parks, and emergency services. The intent is to maximize internal trip capture, this is page one, and avoid the creation of single-dimensional communities that create urban sprawl. Timing is critical in our Comprehensive Plan, it speaks to it over and over again. Whether the timing of a development is appropriate is always an important consideration. That is our role and our duty in the process, the timing of growth. From page four of our Comprehensive Plan, the objective, to maintain the timing of the coordinated development with infrastructure, transportation, transit services, and other public services such as schools, recreational facilities, et cetera, in a financially feasible manner, which has been spoken to. Also, from objective forty-eight in the Wyomama Village Plan, as Commissioner Smith said, she was there, the intent, the intent has been upheld in terms of the Planning Commission and this board. In order to avoid, avoid a pattern of development that could contribute to urban sprawl, it is the intent, this is objective forty-eight of the Wyomama Plan, it is the intent of this category to designate Wyomama Village Residential two areas inside the boundaries of the Wyomama Village Plan that are suited for agricultural development in the immediate horizon of the plan, but may be suitable for the expansion of the village as described in the plan. One of the ways Wyomama Village determines suitability is to look at existing job opportunities. This was so explicit that they were measured in terms of square feet, I couldn't believe it as I read it through, of commercial office, light industrial, government services, and neighborhood development residential support uses. We need to follow our prior staff's decision, the staff and the, the Planning Commission about, with regards to this. The jobs are not there, we must deny this application. And I could, I mean, go through, it is so explicit about every square foot and how it's calculated and everything else that was included in the original plan. And as I understand it, the applicants, even back then, were present and, and at those meetings and certainly at the time, could have objected if they thought that that was not appropriate way to move forward with the development and, and let the board know at that time. But that is what the community plan says, that is what we're working with, and I am wholeheartedly supporting denial. It would be inappropriate to, to move forward on this until we have the job situation settled.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I couldn't agree with Commissioner Hagan more. I think we've already had one issue that we rejected come back from the courts, and, you know, it's just going to continue to cost us millions of dollars to defend some of these decisions like the jobs. You know, jobs come where people live, and, I mean, it's the cart before the horse. And that's why I was against that original jobs addition to the comp plan was because you, you have to have the density and then the jobs come in. It can't be the other way around. And so I, I really, I, I think this is going to end up in the courts again. And when we have, when it comes back, you know, we just have to be fair and balanced on all these issues. And that was just, to me, a requirement that just didn't belong there. I think it's, I, I just don't think it belongs there because it's, is the cart before the horse issue, and Commissioner Hagan made some very salient points. Thank you.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
I'm sorry, I didn't take it down.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize? Okay, we have a motion for denial by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Standing for the discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
No.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioner Hagan and Commissioner Merman voted no.
Commissioner Moretta?
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us up to item G three, application number PD nineteen dash zero nine two nine. This is a thirty-acre site, it's owned AS one and AR, which respectively permits one acre, single-family development, and one acre per five acre, single-family development. The request is for a planned development to permit one hundred and ten, single-family lots at a six thousand square foot minimum. This case was heard by the board and remanded back to the ZHM for a number of different issues. Michelle Heinrich of our staff will address the items that our staff was involved in review, and there was also an element that the Planning Commission staff was asked to reaffirm as well, and they will speak to that, I presume, in their presentation of this item. Staff is recommending approval, and oral argument has been filed.
Good afternoon, Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. As you recall, this was remanded at the February eighteenth, twenty twenty, board meeting, and the Board of County Commissioners asked staffs to examine a few issues for this project. Firstly, they wanted the applicant to work with staff as well to propose a project that has increased connectivity and walkability. And I'm putting a graphic on the Elmo that shows on the top graphic, the original project with an access point on Boyette here and a southern cross-access point here. The bottom graphic depicts what was proposed for the remand consideration. It still continues with the one access point on Boyette along the north, the southern cross-access point for future connectivity when that project is developed. And for internal connectivity, there is a centralized gathering space with a walking path that goes a full east-west through this primary block to create more walking opportunities for the project. You will see that there are no further external access points that are proposed. However, both transportation staff and the applicant did point out that there is access spacing requirements that are to be maintained and a curvature of the road, which brought forth some safety concerns. Therefore, the primary access point in the remand is still located at this one proposed place. Secondly, the board asked to confirm compliance with Comprehensive Plan policies thirteen point seven and thirteen point ten. Natural Resources staff and Planning Commission staff reviewed that and found that the project does comply with those policies. Thirdly, an increase in the off-site preservation area was something that the board wanted the applicants to take a look at. There is no increase in this remand of the off-site preservation area. This graphic depicts where that's located here relative to the project, and Natural Resources staff reviewed that, and found that it does still remain complied with the LDC recommendations. Fourth, the fourth item that the Board of County Commissioners wanted some more input on is River View Community Plan Goal Number Two, which seeks for divorced housing. Planning Commission staff has advised that the project does provide various housing options within the greater community, and that it is looked at in that term, for the greater community, not the individual project. The graphic which was provided in our staff report and is also shown on the Elmo here does show the various lot size developments that are approved in the area relative to this project, and as you'll see, there's quite a variety of lot sizes available in the area. Given all of this, under the remand, staff did not change their original recommendation, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, I have a motion to open for oral argument.
So I'm the Commissioner Merman.
Motion back to Commissioner Merman, the second, seconded by Commissioner Overman to open for oral argument. Standing for the discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Applicant?
Good afternoon, Kami Corbett with Hill Ward Henderson, representing the applicant faulty homes. We are here with our partner-owner of the property, the Girl Scouts of Southwest, or Central Florida, and we are requesting the rezoning of a thirty-acre tract, approximately thirty acres, for one hundred and ten, single-family dwelling units. When this case came before you the first time, we had full recommendations for approval from all reviewing agencies, the Planning Commission, and the Land Use Hearing Officer. The board did choose to remand this case, and Michelle did a very good job of outlining what the remand issues were, specifically the walkability and connectivity. I'd like to place this on the Elmo. Sorry. Showing again that unfortunately, we were not able to address external walkability, but we did look at internally, and we provided this walkway to the common area, the gathering space, and we think that improves the design, and we appreciate the board's push to work on our design. The other thing that we added on this site plan was a natural buffer around, along the western boundary, it's about approximately fifty feet to sixty-four feet in width, and we added that because the residents to the west, the subdivision to the west, came to the first zoning hearing, master hearing, and expressed a concern because they had been told by their builder that that area would be left naturally and be there for a buffer between any future development. We looked at this during the remand, and although it's not required by the code, we were able to accommodate that request, so we have provided that. I think at this time, I'd like to call Steve Henry up to give some testimony with respect to why we weren't unable to provide that external access point.
Afternoon, Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, five oh two three West Lowell, Tampa, three three six oh seven. I put the site plan here. As indicated, that there are a couple constraints that we've got with the site. The first is the curve, so you cannot locate a driveway close to the curve because you have a stop-at-the-site distance and a safety issue, and so that pushes your driveway at least a minimum of five hundred feet from, once you get onto the tangent point of the curve. So that limits the amount of access that you can have. Second, we've got a existing subdivision driveway to our west, which then to meet your access spacing criteria, it leaves only one access point that we can provide to the site to meet the access spacing criteria. In addition to that, by providing more than one, there's nothing from a transportation standpoint, we're providing the turn lanes per the Land Development Code. By providing two, there's no conductivity to the north, so from our standpoint, the one access will operate at acceptable level of service, the geometry will be provided as per the Land Development Code. Thank you.
Also, with respect to the consistency with the Comprehensive Plan policies regarding significant wildlife habitat, your staff has found that the proposed off-site mitigation is consistent with the policies both in the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code, and I'd like to have Stephanie Hudgens from Cardno to come up and provide some additional testimony on that item as well.
Hi, Stephanie Hudgens with Cardno, thirty-nine oh five Creston Park Drive, River View, Florida, three three five seven eight. So I'd like to discuss that the onsite preservation really isn't manageable for this project, and that's per the Land Development Code, section four oh one point oh eight C seven and eight, because it would require sufficient management capabilities and restoration activities, as well as the vegetative communities there are pretty overgrown. So that's why we decided to go with the off-site.
Also, with respect to the consistency with the comprehensive plan policies regarding significant wildlife habitat, your staff has found that the proposed off-site mitigation is consistent with the policies both in the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. And I'd like to have Stephanie Hudgens from Cardno to come up and provide some additional testimony on that item as well.
Hi, Stephanie Hudgens with Cardno, thirty-nine oh five Creston Park Drive, Riverview, Florida, three three five seven eight. So I'd like to discuss that the onsite preservation really isn't manageable for this project. And that's per the Land Development Code, section four oh one point oh eight C seven and eight, because it would require sufficient management capabilities and restoration activities, as well as the vegetative communities there are pretty overgrown. So that's why we decided to go with the off-site habitat preservation. And according to the Land Development Code, section four point oh one oh nine C, the developer shall protect the xeric, amnesic habitats, significant wildlife habitat up to fifty percent. So that's why we proposed the off-site habitat of the fifteen point three eight acres of preservation, which is consistent with the requirements of the Land Development Code. In addition, the proposed off-site habitat does comply with Land Development Code, section four point oh one point one three, because it does contain the similar habitats that are found on the development parcel. And as well, its location is much more manageable for long-term conservation and preservation of the habitats, as well as meeting the requirements of the significant wildlife habitat in code for providing stands of natural community, which have the potential to support healthy and diverse populations of wildlife. The off-site preservation area butts the Triple Creek Environmental Lands Acquisition Area to the south and provides that expansion needed. So it's my professional opinion that that fifteen point three eight acres provides and meets the Land Development Codes for the off-site preservation. Thank you.
And obviously, as the applicant, we don't have additional off-site mitigation that we can offer. And so from the applicant's perspective, we're looking at it purely as if we were coming in with the development of a thirty acre parcel and what would be the required mitigation. And your code actually has mandatory language that says, in no event shall the mitigation be more than fifty percent of the upland. And the request for an additional eight acres would result in a seventy-six percent mitigation requirement for this site. And so from the applicant's perspective, while I appreciate desire on the part of the board to maybe perhaps get more land, I just don't think it's appropriate in this case to be a condition of this rezoning or a basis for denial. The Girl Scouts are here, they filed for oral argument. I'll let them speak for themselves with respect to their position on that issue. But we did look at it, and we just did not think it was appropriate in this particular instance. We've already gone above and beyond what the requirements are in the Land Development Code. Typically, wildlife habitat mitigation is not addressed during the rezoning process. It's addressed during the site development process. Here, we filed extensive analysis of not only the location of the off-site area and analysis and comparison between the two areas, and then also agreed to the terms and conditions of a conservation easement and agreed to a habitat management plan. The Land Development Code allows a developer or an owner of a property who's mitigating for habitat to actually turn the maintenance of that preserved area over to Hillsborough County for maintenance. In this instance, the Girl Scouts have agreed that they will maintain it to ensure to the board and to the staff reviewing this that this would in fact result in a preservation and maintenance of significant wildlife habitat. We have recommendations, again, of approval from all reviewing agencies and including the land use hearing officer, and we would respectfully request that you approve this this afternoon.
Thank you. We have one person that's a party of record to speak, and that person is speaking as a proponent. That is Laura Webb. Ms. Webb, you have ten minutes.
Yes. Good afternoon, Laura Webb, Board Chair for the Girl Scouts of West Central Florida, forty-six ten Eisenhower Boulevard, Tampa, three three six three four. So we stand by and support what the county staff and commission hearing master have recommended regarding the approval of the fifteen point three eight acres. According to the recommendations of the staff and of the Development Services Department and the zoning hearing master, we are fulfilling all laws and will be in compliance with Land Development Code requirements with this sale. The proposed mitigation exceeds the county's code requirements. Mitigation area has been identified at the rezoning stage. Mitigation area is of better quality than the onsite mitigation area, and the Girl Scouts agreed to maintain the mitigation area. We need to continue operating our camp, which we use daily to provide valuable outdoor Girl Scout experiences, learn about the environment, team building, leadership development, and life skills. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only party of record I have. You want to rebuttal something, Ms. Corbett? You wait.
No, I was just going to say that that concludes our presentation. But our entire team, including our civil engineer, you saw Ms. Hudgens, Mr. Henry, are all here. Mr. Deason from Pulte Homes to answer any questions that the board have any.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Planning Commission staff?
Hi, Melissa Leinhardt, Planning Commission staff. I do apologize. Can you hear me okay?
Hello?
Can anyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. I had to connect from my phone. I had some technical difficulties.
You're breaking up real, you're breaking up.
Okay, may I just say that the staff report is on record, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I don't know what she said. I have no idea. All right, let's move on to zoning here, master.
The zoning hearing master provided a summary of both the original hearing prior to the remand and the summary on Remand Matters. I'll kind of go through the highlights of the summary on the remand. The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's addition of a natural buffer along the western boundary. And the zoning hearing master found that while that buffer is not required by the LDC, the buffer was requested by neighbors to the west. And the buffer varies from fifty to sixty-four feet along the western boundary, and the applicant is still committing to sixty-six hundred square foot lots along that same boundary. The zoning hearing master also stated that further additional pedestrian connectivity routes are provided under the remand site plan. However, the zoning hearing master noted that additional vehicle connectivity within the site is not being provided due to some issues that are summarized in the report, including driveway spacing requirement, site visibility, and provision of adequate vehicle access capacity. Is there anything to summarize? The natural resources staff review. Natural resources staff found that the development of the parcel does not fragment a wildlife corridor as defined in the Development Review Procedures Manual. Additionally, natural resources staff evaluated the original acreage proposed for off-site preservation and finds that the off-site preservation area meets the requirements of the LDC. Regarding Goal Two of the Riverview Community Plan, different lot sizes throughout this area reflect the vision of the community plan by encouraging attractive residential development that complements the surrounding character and also promotes housing diversity. Zoning hearing master found that overall, the application satisfies the intent of future land use element policy sixteen point three and also satisfies the intent of Goal Twelve, Objective twelve point one, and Policy twelve one point four of the community design component of the future land use element with regard to compatibility and connectivity. And the zoning hearing master therefore recommended approval of the application.
Okay, thank you. Members, what's your pleasure?
Move the item, Commissioner White.
Second back Commissioner White, second back Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you. And while I see that there's been some good changes, I'm still very concerned about the fact that there's no, there's still not an access point that might slow traffic down through that area. It's very clear that we're creating a conservation wildlife corridor kind of arrangement to the conservation tract north of it. It means we've got gopher turtles crossing on a road that's going forty miles an hour with nothing to slow it down. But I do, I do appreciate the changes that have been made, but there's still only one access. And while I'll approve the project, I still don't think we've gotten where we needed to in terms of addressing the concerns of speed on that corner and access to wildlife. If there's a way to do that in the future as this plan goes forward, I'd love to see it. I'll stop there.
Okay. Say no further discussion on the motion. I have a motion back to Commissioner White, second back Commissioner Hagan. Please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moretta.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us up to the H items, specifically H one A and H one B. Commissioners, H one A is a case that has oral argument filed by the applicant. And the issue that the oral argument was filed for has been resolved. The oral argument is still, consists of the applicant. There's two cases procedurally, after we explain it, the board could move to hear that basically both as one item, focusing on the PRS as the public hearing. The rezoning PD twenty dash zero one seven two, located twenty-five feet south of the intersection of Fermill Drive and Sims Road, is a proposal for a hundred single-family homes. A rezoning out of a planned development that's sixteen acres. This net proposal is sixteen and a half acres. It's rezoning out of a planned development. Since it's leaving a portion behind that was necessary to amend that site plan, and that is the purpose of H one B, which is the personal appearance to modify the plan. So in the event the board moves to approve both of these, then you would have the parent tract that's been reconciled in terms of site plan regulations, and then H one A would move forward in terms of how it's configured to be regulated in that particular PD. Michelle Heinrich of our staff is going to walk you through a graphic that depicts how all these pieces will work together ultimately.
Good afternoon, Michelle Heinrich Development Services. As Mr. Moretta stated, this application, it's actually two applications that are dealing with one PD. And that is shown right here on this graphic. And the original PD, oh seven thirteen twenty-five, as most recently modified by PRS fourteen ten sixty-eight, is almost twenty-six acres in size. It is in SMU six future land use category and in the urban service area. The way it is shown here now is that you basically have two different property owners. One in the green, which is referred to as Parcel One, is approved for a single-family and retail. And then Parcel Two, which is shown here in the yellow, that is also approved for single-family, and as you can see, it's a unified development. This graphic shows the changes that will occur upon the approval of the proposed PD and then the PRS. The area outlined in blue is the existing PD that I just summarized for you. The area that is shown in red is proposed to be a new PD, and that also adds an acreage shown here in the purple area. All of that, if approved, would become PD twenty dash oh one seven two, and it would be approved for a hundred single-family lots. The area that is remaining under that PD would then be recalibrated and recognized under PRS twenty oh five thirty. That is the area shown in yellow. And with that reduced acreage, that comes out to a permissible maximum unit count of sixty-nine single-family lots. And they are not proposing any changes to the internal access points that were shown here under the unified plan. So when this property over here, the new PD is developed, they will provide the access points that will provide access to Sims Road. They also have the previously existing development option for three lots with an easement through this property. And staff has reviewed these and found them approvable, subject to proposed conditions. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Applicant available?
Sure. We, Elise Batzel, Sterns Weaver, four oh one East Jackson Street, Suite twenty-one hundred. Michelle did a great job sort of summarizing the PRS, so I'll remain available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and we have no party of record for a proponent or an opponent. So we're now moving to hear from the planning commission staff. Planning Commission staff?
Maybe having technical difficulty, I'm told.
Okay, let's move, let's move to the zoning hearing, master.
It's a bad storm.
If you could hold a moment, Mr., I'm having some difficulty too.
This is the PRS portion, correct, Joe? So there wouldn't be a zoning hearing master report on this portion of the item that's currently?
I believe we're still proceeding with the oral argument portion.
Yes, we are.
Have we opened the PD? Oh, I see. Okay.
And then we'll open the PD separately. It's what I understand. PRS separately.
Still having difficulty, Ms. Lagwin? Ms. Lagwin? Can you hear me?
Yes, Commissioner. Sorry.
Are you still having difficulty?
Hearing master, the zoning hearing master has considered the application, the planned development. Requested to rezone the sixteen point seven eight acre site to a planned development for a maximum of a hundred single-family detached residential dwelling units with forty-four hundred square feet for minimum lot sizes. The existing zoning contains ninety-six single-family units, as well as forty thousand square feet of office uses, which includes five thousand square feet for commercial uses. The retail office portion is entirely contained within the new subject PD. Proposed rezoning for a maximum of a hundred single-family dwellings will result in a reduction of trip generation in both the AM and PM peak hours. Although opposition testimony included a claim of prescriptive easement rights from the subject property owner associated with the property to the south, my understanding that issue has been settled. And the zoning hearing master's recommendation was that the proposal will result in a development that's compatible with the area. And the zoning hearing master therefore recommended approval.
Okay, let's move it to H one B PRS. The applicant want to address that at this time? Are you all hearing me?
Is simply to reconcile the site plan, the rezoning is proposed to rezone out of a planned development. Essentially a ministerial item, it's a public hearing. Staff is recommending approval.
All right, does the applicant want to address anything on this?
No, sir. Again, we have staff's recommendation for approval as of the PD, and we're here to answer any questions that you have on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak as a proponent? Anyone who wishes to speak as a proponent? Anyone who wishes to speak as an opponent? Anyone who wishes to speak as an opponent? Wave your time for rebuttal. We now would combine the two members. Pardon me? I'm sorry. I heard two or three people speaking. I'm getting some feedback. What's going on now?
There's a gentleman coming to speak to the PRS portion.
Sir, have you been sworn in? Sir, have you been sworn in?
I can't understand you.
Someone ask if he's been sworn in? Pardon me?
The gentleman needs to be sworn.
Somebody, please, clerk, please swear. I mean, sir, raise your right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Sir, are you speaking as a proponent, as an opponent?
I own the adjoining property.
November or December.
Because this buffer.
Sir, sir, excuse me, excuse me. Someone has their mic open. Would you please mute your microphone?
Yeah.
Barbara Fight, would you please?
Fight, please mute your microphone, Ms. Fight. Fight, please mute your microphone, Ms. Fight. Continue, sir.
Taking my property, my homestead, my dwelling, by the buffer that you put around the perimeter of this development, I voted in favor of the development over 10 years ago. I went to all your meetings, and I'm not able to keep fighting this battle. My family and I are split. We've had a constant, people trying to buy us out. My wife and I are almost invalid, so we're unable to move. I look at this map, and you've got 150-foot buffer that you guys have approved, and it takes my entire mobile home and everything. What are we coming to? I haven't been able to attend these meetings. I've got tumors in my right lung, and my wife is battling breast cancer. I want you to leave me alone. When my family, my mother told me when I was 12, Robert, when you get older, you buy a piece of property and pay it off, and nobody can take it. And here you've 10 years of pure hell. Split my family, my wife and I have been married 60 years. I've done 20 years in one day on the Tampa Fire Department. 23 years in the Navy, and I'm about to be homeless according to these lawyers' plans. I'm too, I don't have enough life left in me to fight the zoning board and all this other stuff. I want to be left alone. Now, I want to know what is going on. Are you going to throw me and my wife out on the street? According to this, the lawyers, the big, polyloent lawyers, I'll be out on the street.
Commissioners, I think that we can clarify that for the gentleman. I believe that what he's referring to is the buffer area on the site plan that has to show land uses within that distance of the project.
Rinders, my property is useless. I couldn't get one iota for it.
I think we can ask applicant to address, but we're not changing anything on your property with this application, sir.
You are? You've already done it. I was not aware of this. I will repeat, I signed off. I've never been against development. I've been a builder. I was a CB for 20 years in the Navy. I'm a builder. I've owned property all over this county. My family settled Hillsborough County in the mid-1850s, 80 acres and a mule. And this is not my idea of American government. It's not. I'm sorry this slipped up on me. I've got chest pains. I'm going to get in my car, and you can come with your bulldozer, whatever you're going to do, and push me off. And I'll take my wife for 60 years and go down under the bridge.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner White.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, folks. Hold on. Hold on, Commissioner White, I'll come back to you.
I just, I just wanted to ask staff to try to catch that gentleman before he leaves and help give him a better understanding.
That's what I was getting ready to say. Somebody please get with him now.
Please.
Is someone with him now?
Yes, sir.
Somebody talk to me.
Get your alderman right now.
Yes, sir, they're talking to him right now.
We're now back on A1A and H1A and H1B. What's your pleasure?
I'd like to provide some information to you about the comments of Mr. Alderman had understood.
Sure. Under the Development Review, oh, I'm sorry, Elise Batzel, 401 East Jackson, Sterns Weaver. Under the Development Review Procedures Manual, when we come in for a planned development, we have to show extra detail about what is within 150 feet. And so that property is not in our development. It is not part of this application. You can see the gray, for example, on option A. That gray is not part of the application. It is just where we have to provide an enhanced level of detail on the site plan. So I think there might be some misunderstanding that he believes that his property is included in this application, and that is not correct. But we're happy, Clark Lowmiller also can address this from a more technical perspective of the Development Review Procedures Manual, if that's helpful.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Actually, I'm sorry, I forgot to put my hand down. I was going to ask that staff explain to us exactly what his comments were and how they relate to these two items.
I think they just did, but someone want to address this?
If Mr. Gornley, please do it.
Indicate how these parcels work together and.
Commissioner Heinrich, Development Services, I believe the gentleman who was speaking is a property owner within the 150-foot distance around the proposed PD. And I believe he misunderstood the application in that he believed all of this area was being rezoned. Because our DRPM requires you to show a buffer of 150 feet outside the PD area to give you a context of the uses, future land use and the development pattern, that is not the area that is being rezoned. It is only the areas that you see bolded area with the conceptual development plan here.
So that's your question, Elizabeth Murman?
Can I ask a further question? And this is either for her or Adam. I mean, his comments about affecting the value of his property, that type of thing, is that something you see as realistic?
Commissioner, I believe the gentleman's concern was related to structures that are shown within that 150-foot boundary.
Okay.
And his understanding or belief that the zoning was going to change those. I think that that was the genesis of the comment about the bulldozers coming in. Can assure the board, Mr. Alderman, if he is here, that property is not included in the rezoning, therefore, there will be no development on that property as a result of the zoning action at all. Ms. Heinrich stated correctly that the county's requirements require that additional detail be shown in the vicinity of a proposed zoning, and that was the detail that was on the site plan. I believe that's the nature of the misunderstanding. But for Mr. Alderman and the board, I assure you that there is no, nothing in this action that would affect Mr. Alderman's property. No bulldozers, no anything coming in there. What he has on that property can remain as is and will remain as is if he so chooses if this application is approved.
Okay, thank you. I'll move approval. Thank you.
Motion about Commissioner Murman, is there a second?
Second, Commissioner White.
About Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thanks. And to just expound upon what staff was just saying in relation to Commissioner Murman's comments, yes, I believe that the gentleman falsely believed that there was a taking of his land, and for the record, that's simply not the case. And I know staff has already put plenty of comments on the record as such.
Mr. Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I'm looking at the illustration on page three of the PDF where we have the outline of the two parcels in the gray section. Where is this gentleman's property exactly? Maybe I missed that.
Someone please point out what his gentleman's property is.
Brian Grady Hillsborough, Development Services. His property is right here.
So it's the small building?
It's a parcel outside of the PD, the existing PD and the PD though.
The area on this graphic, Commissioners, the area in yellow is the subject of the rezoning with the additional parcel on the south, and the area in yellow is the subject of the PRS. So the area in gray is not included in the rezoning.
Okay, so he's in the folio 77198.0000?
Yes, ma'am.
And that buffer area that is illustrated there is actually not in the property, but it's actually showing as a buffer to his trailer that's to the left of that, like, I'm assuming it's that little long rectangle square. It's smaller than.
The area in red is a 50-foot easement that's on his property. It's an existing easement that provides access to the parcel in yellow. Upon redevelopment, the parcel in yellow access will have to be through the existing PD. That access provides, it currently does and is not changing as part of this, provides access for a maximum of three lots within this area, the room is under that existing easement. None of that is changing, those configurations are not changing. And again, if this redevelops with a single-family subdivision in accordance with the PD, access will be through here, not through here.
So maybe his issue is associated with the easement being utilized, whereas it may not have been identified prior to this rezoning, too.
I think the issue is not necessarily the easement. I think it is the buffer area that is shown as a dashed line surrounding the whole project. That's a, buffer perhaps isn't the right word. That's an area where we require that a greater amount of detail be shown for off-site areas to help provide the context for the review that Ms. Heinrich had mentioned.
Excellent, thank you very much. I'll stop there.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
I'll take my hand down, sorry, sir.
Okay, we have a motion about Commissioner Murman, a second about Commissioner White. If you have further discussion, please call the roll on H1A and H1B.
Miller?
Pardon me?
You asked for the roll call, sir?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven and zero.
Mr. Murda.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us up to the final two items of the agenda, H2A and H2B. They're related items. They're both public hearings. H2A is DRI 20-0385. This is a request to amend the development order to recognize and amend the area of the development order that speaks to unused entitlements. There's approximately 70,000 entitlements that have not been designated. The applicant is proposing to draw down 24,000 of those entitlements and amend the DRI map H to indicate that the drawdown and the location, and also commensurate plant development minor modification via PRS 20-0384 to land those entitlements in pocket 61 to provide a total of 160,000 of commercial slash office. Currently, there's a, excuse me, that will accommodate the 24,000 from the DRI and land it in pocket one. There's existing commercial entitlements there now, and that will bring it up to a maximum of 160,000 on that pocket. Both of these are public hearings, and staff is recommending approval of both items.
Is applicant here?
Yes, Truitt Gardner, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, you have 15 minutes.
Great. 400 North Hatchet Drive, I have been sworn, actually was sworn at the beginning of the hearing. This is a convoluted application with DRI and PD applications. Joe and Michelle and Brian and Nancy Takamori have all been very helpful in this. Just to clarify from the onset, we are not proposing to add any additional entitlements at all. Instead, from a broad perspective, what we're doing is we're taking an abandoned Winn-Dixie store and reactivating the site. We'll end up with a storage facility in the rear, which actually reduces traffic, and then four proposed out parcels on the frontage. Hopefully, those will include, one, a bank, two, a Starbucks, and then third, an ABC liquor store, which we all need during the pandemic, and I think we all need after this hearing. So with that, happy to answer any questions. We appreciate the support of the county staff and the planning commission. We have not heard anything negative from our notice and feedback with the neighborhood. In fact, those conversations have been an expression of joy that this site that's been dormant will be reactivated. So with that, happy to answer any questions, and thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as a proponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Anyone wishing to speak as an opponent? Applicant waves his time.
Yes, sir.
Pardon me?
Hello, how you doing? My name is Sean Rice, 6186 Highway 41.
I'm sorry.
I own a restaurant.
Sir, have you, sir, have you been sworn in? Have you been sworn in? Where did he go? Sir?
No.
Somebody please swear, man.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Sir, are you speaking as a proponent or as an opponent?
Well, this is the first I've heard what the development wanted. Tried to find out for the last probably six months and hope he could tell me. So I'm all about new business, absolutely. When I moved in there four and a half years ago, there was a goodwill offering between my landlord and the Winn-Dixie landlord that we had rights to parking at the very front there. Now, do I have anything in paper? Absolutely not. But it was, it was a game changers for me to sign the lease. I have a pretty decent business, but we do use that parking. Now, I want new business in Apollo Beach. We need new business, but I just want to be reassured that I will be able to use parking in that area, or will that basically put me out of business? The Starbucks, apparently, I've heard where they're going, but no concrete information. There was supposed to be a hearing before March, before COVID. Then it was all canceled, so it was just hearsay I heard. I've called the landlord, called the property manager to no avail. There's been no lights in that parking lot for a year and a half, and I've called, I would say about 30 times, and got no response. So it's, I've been burgled, my restaurant's been broken into three times. So again, I'm all for it. So, but I just, where the Starbucks is going, it's within 80 feet, 80 yards from my business, and apparently a Starbucks all have drive-throughs. So that would impede in my business massively. I know it's two separate lots, but I'm willing to work with the property manager and the landlord if they were willing to get back to me.
Okay.
I'd be happy to respond to that.
Go ahead.
Sure. So we've reviewed title. We actually had some strange occurrences in the title, but this parking situation did not come up, so this is the first I'm hearing of it. We represent a group that would be purchasing this property should this rezoning proceed, and I can assure to put this gentleman in touch with my clients, and if something can be worked out to accommodate some parking for him, I'm sure we'd be happy to do so.
Okay. Sir, did you understand what he said?
Yeah, as long as somebody's willing to reach out to me. Again, I've called the property manager to no avail, so I would like to take this forward, absolutely. And again, I'm all for new business, absolutely.
Okay. He says someone will reach out to you from, one of his clients will reach out to you, sir.
Thank you.
Would you mind, just so I have it, would you give me your name and phone number?
Okay, he says someone will reach out to you from, one of his clients will reach out to you, sir.
Thank you.
Would you mind, just so I have it, would you give me your, your name and phone number?
We'll get the gentleman's contact.
All right.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Is there, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Anyone else? Okay.
Miss of purple, Commissioner Merman.
Go, about Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman, the, oh, to prove items H two A and H two B. Seeing any further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven and zero.
Mr. Moreta, is there anything further to come before us today?
Please, the agenda. Thank you, sir.
Let me, let me thank all the staff that was involved in putting this together. I know that you did a lot of work to make sure that everyone was safe at the John, at the Saunders Library. And I want to thank you all for, for doing that and making sure that we all were able to see actual people coming in to speak down there. Let me thank the, all the staff again. Thank you very much, members. I thank you for being on here. And with that, we adjourn.
Bye. Have a good day. Bye, everyone.
Good day.
Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.